As Farver City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadeen?
Here.
Joseph Camara?
Here.
Stephen Camara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Alabio Bo?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Bellatier?
Here.
Bavarez?
Here.
President Plon?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting, allow any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda today is citizens' input. First person to ascend to speak, Ed Gagnon, 220 Johnston Street regarding the reappointment of David Underhill.
Hi, good evening. As you know, I'm Ed Gagnon. I'm the executive director of the Farver Housing Joint Tenants Council. I'd like to request that you say yes and vote yes on David Underhill's reappointment as the commissioner to the Farver Housing Authority. He is a tenant representative, he's doing an excellent job, and he was again re-elected by the Board of the Farver Joint Tenants Council. And I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next person to ascend to speak, we've sent a quick email letter here. Colin Dias, 560 Ray Street. "Greetings, members of the City Council. I would like to voice my frustration and confusion in regards to the lack of notice for open board positions on our city website. Our cities have had notice of open board positions where any individual can fairly apply. There is no list of vacancies on the city website as required by the city charter under Section 3-3. Now, I know this is not the fault of the council, and we know who the person to blame lies upon. I would focus on the council's attention to sentence three of Section 9-14 of the city charter that addresses a lack of enforcement of the charter. I hope this addresses the problem and has a quick, swift speed and with seriousness." Colin Dias. That will conclude citizens' input for this evening. We're going to continue our budget deliberations with public safety, reminding the council that we have completed all aspects of our municipal budget discussions this evening. With the remaining items would be public safety and EMS. We had sewer and water that was on our agenda for this evening to have discussions. While it is a tab on our agenda, we can still have those discussions if you like, or we can just move on. But we did have Mr. Sullivan down at a prior meeting, which we had those discussions for water and sewer as well. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi, I'd also like to invite down to the table the police chief, please. It's in finance. Oh, is it? On our point of information here, it is the revised agenda that we have before us. The first item is the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Fall River and the Redevelopment Authority. I'd like to take this out of order and get this budget completed first, stay consistent with that. So can we make a motion to take the agenda out of order? Motion to take it out of order has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to go to the intermunicipal agreement after we conclude our discussions with our chiefs and our police as well. So, Chief, welcome. Brief oversight for your department. What we've been doing all along is just pretty much getting a brief overview from you. Any changes that you've seen?
I'm sorry, what did we just do?
We just made a motion to push the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Fall River and the Redevelopment Authority, which is on our agenda for the Committee on Finance. And we're going to go to the continuation of the fiscal 2020 municipal budget.
Isn't that the first, that's the first item on the agenda?
No. We have a revised agenda. Thursday, the 20th, 2019, 6:00 p.m., where it has citizens' input as item one. Item two is the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Fall River and the Redevelopment Authority. And three, the continuation of the 2020 fiscal year budget. So that's what we're doing. Chief?
Good evening. So I believe you asked about changes that we've seen...
Yeah, I apologize. If you could just overview the council if there's any changes...
Within the budget, there's been an increase in overtime, which we...
Excuse me, Chief, I don't understand what the confusion is with the council.
We don't have that agenda.
It's a separate document.
Calm down, everybody.
That's the agenda of the special meeting.
There's no need to get worked up. We have the munis... No, I'm not entertaining questions right now. We're going to continue with the budget. Motions happened, it's over and done with. We're going to go to the intermunicipal agreement after we can finish the budget discussions.
As a matter of fact, with all due respect, we don't have the same agenda you have. That's all we're asking you.
I'm saying that it's posted, and I don't know why it's not on your desk, but it's here. If you would like, I can have the clerk make a copy.
What is the date of the one you're holding in your hand?
It says June 19th at 4:36 p.m.
We have June 20th at 12:11.
Okay, I don't pass out the agenda, so...
And June 20th, 12:11 is different than what you're holding.
Okay?
This is the revised agenda.
No, it's not. So you have two agendas before you. You have the agenda here, and then you have a revised agenda. You have two pieces.
And the revised agenda is dated June 20th.
We are in recess. We are back in session. Chief, apologize about that.
Okay, good evening. So the changes in this year's budget, our overtime was increased around 214,000, which reflects our actual usage due to contractual increases over the past year. We added two part-time co-op mechanics from Diamond, who actually have been working for us for close to a year, but the council approved the positions after the budget was finalized last year, so they were not in last year's budget, they were in this year's budget. And then we have some equipment, we came up with some equipment needs. We need to replace one of our canine, the dog, not the officer. And there is vehicles, which were in last year's budget, so we're continuing to budget vehicles. And I think that's pretty much it. I believe there's four total.
And for the council's edification, page 299 of your budget book is where the Police Department salaries items begins, 299 in the budget book. Counselor, seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Still Counselor Long's under, but I think he has some questions along these lines. New police, new police coming on? How many?
So we're budgeted for 237. Right now, we're at 221. We lost 16 officers this year through retirement.
16?
Yeah, retirement, resignation, and other, for other reasons. So we're at 221 right now total. That's, for me, down to, through the ranks.
So you plan on taking on 16 new officers?
That's what we hope to do. We're in the process right now of hiring 11, which will start, hopefully be able to start in the academy in September.
When do you think they'll come online?
So if they do make the September, there's two academies, September and October. If they make either one of those, it'll probably be around June, when they graduate and then after field training, they'll be able to work alone.
And that would bring us up to a complement of...
That would be 232. And that's the most that our field training program can handle at one time. So we're going to be in a constant hiring mode over the next fiscal year, because I do have another half dozen or so retirements coming up in January. So we're going to, we'll be hiring constantly for the next year and a half, two years, in smaller blocks because of the field training program.
And 232, what, and your goal, I think I heard in the past, is 250?
That's my ultimate goal. I'd like to see 250. I think that that's where we really need to be, and it gives us the buffer that we need and allows us to do a lot more things than we're able to do right now.
I'll yield, I'm surprised, I think Counselor Long might have some questions on that.
Thank you. Counselor, seat six, Counselor Long?
No, I know, just, I wasn't clear on that. This year, the complement of officers was how many?
We're budgeted for 237.
237?
Right. And I believe we started the year somewhere around 225.
And you ended?
And we're ending at 221, but we did hire through the course of the year, which mitigated some of the, like you said, we had 16 people leave, so we mitigated some of that by hiring, and we'll continue to do that.
To get back to the 237?
Yeah, we never actually hit it because of the people leaving. We were on track to hit it, and then, like I said, there were resignations, retirements that we didn't expect.
Right, so within that budget this year, is there any turn back on salaries, or was that what happened there?
I believe a lot of it is going to be eaten up by the increased overtime cost, but there may be some, we're still looking at that. There's one, I think today was the last payroll, correct?
It wasn't.
So, as we stated in the beginning here, you're going to go to 237, and you're also increasing overtime. So I'm not sure why that would be. If we're hiring more personnel, why would we be increasing the overtime?
It's just historical data that we use, so it's what we spent in the past. And it's things like, it's not manpower on the street necessarily, some of it is, but some of it's also court time and other overtime, other events that aren't impacted by the amount of officers that we have. So for example, someone who, the honor guard marches in a parade, or something of that nature, it doesn't matter how many officers I have, I still have to pay overtime for those people to go.
Additionally, Counselor...
Additionally, this past year, the chief did have some special intensive efforts, right? Came about as to particular problems, I don't know if you want to elaborate, and that was through overtime.
For example, the incident on South Main Street back in February, we put out extra patrols and there was overtime involved in that. So hopefully this will mitigate us having to come back for more money.
Do you presently have any officers that are being funded by grants that are expiring or any of that type of stuff?
Nothing that's expiring, everything, so CDA is one of our funding sources, housing, the Disability Commission, and they've all been renewed, so nothing's expiring, but we do have people on grants.
Counselor, on page 318, you'll see a list of those individuals who are not included in the operating budget but are being paid with outside sources of funds. So you've got the Housing Authority, Diamond, the Walking Beat, the SROs, et cetera.
So these positions here on page 318, they're, these funding are associated with individuals, not just...
Most of them are funded by the individuals.
Interesting.
Some of them are not. So in particular, if you look at the Commission on Disability, they reimburse us a recovery of 128,000. At the moment, we have two particular positions in there that are not at the low end of the scale, so we're not getting reimbursed for the entire amount of the recovery.
Are you?
Thank you. Counselor, seat two, Counselor Camara.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, welcome. I know last academy, we were expecting to put more people in the academy, and we didn't... How many positions did you put in the academy? Four out of the 10 or so you wanted to put in there?
In the, two academies ago, we wanted to put 11, we were only able to get nine seats. And then, so the other two started a couple of months later, and one of them will actually graduate next Friday.
Good. So what are the chances that we'll be able to get everybody into the next academy coming up? Because I know if we're going to hire 15 and they don't make it to the academy, it's going to just delay it again.
Right, so we changed the process, the hiring process that we were using wasn't working for us, obviously. So we've changed it where the background checks are being done earlier in the process, and we're getting, so we're able to register them earlier in the whole hiring process than we were in the past.
Right, good.
So I think we'll be able to get them in.
So that shouldn't affect the academy if we did delay it, it shouldn't affect it?
Right, we shouldn't, we expect that we'll be able to get them into either, there's two academies luckily too, so September or October.
All right, good. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. As far as all the vehicles, are there any recalls that were in the past? Have all been addressed and they're all set?
Everything's all set. The new mechanic's working out really well. We've had good response from the officers too, as responsiveness to their complaints and concerns. And we've had a few new cars come in recently, so that situation's stable right now.
All right, good. And the men have all the equipment that they pretty much need, and all those radios are working fine, everything's fine?
Yeah, there are radios in, I failed to mention that, there are radios in the budget, and with this batch of radios, every officer should have a radio.
Okay. All right, and it's important to put more men in the street with vehicles that are going to get them to where they need to be and make sure they can communicate with the radio, so.
Absolutely.
It's good, good job, chief. Would that, are you, Mr. President? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat one, Counselor Kadeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, just in terms of the academy, so we, two, right, so Reading's coming up, you've got to give notification by, what, July, for, beginning of July for that?
I'm not sure what the date is. It's, as long as they have vacancies, they'll accept us.
Okay. Just, are you in the hiring process enough to turn around that quickly?
We actually have five or six that are already registered, and we're trying to grab the rest, which will hit the September or October.
Okay.
They still have vacancies in Reading and Randolph right now.
All right. So of the 237, you said 16 have left, so that they physically are no longer employed with the city? Or do we have situations? Because I know there's some individuals that are still out on extended, either comp days or sick days. So is that 16 plus those individuals? I'm just trying to figure out where you come...
That's the total, that's the total people who are no longer coming to work, so if I look real quick...
Of, I guess my question would be, of that 16, how many are we carrying on the books and for how long?
So at different stages, so I have, I have five that are going to leave in January, one in May, one we're not sure of yet, and then two others sometime in 2020, and they have not given me a date, but they've told me they intend to retire in 2020. So they're, they're still working, I...
So you got eight to 10, roughly eight to 10 that are still on the books but not working?
Right now, yeah. Until January.
Until January or potentially into 2020.
And then a couple in May, yeah.
Okay. Are we doing anything in terms of, I mean, that's always been a major issue for us in the police department, as you know, it's just the accrued time, that's either the comp time or the admin time.
Yeah, as of July 1st.
Sick time, obviously, is a major issue, but have we, have we worked on trying to get some cap on how much can be accrued so that we're not carrying individuals for a year, year and a half?
We are, as of July 1st, we're going to comply with the Fair Labor Standards Act as it relates to comp time.
So they agree to the language?
It's the law, there's really no...
So you don't have language in the collective bargaining agreement?
There's some language that addresses certain types of earned time, how, caps, how much they can have, but the overall category of compensatory time is capped by the federal law.
Yep.
So we won't have people accruing that much time anymore, and the people that do have, that exceed that time, can't add any more time. And then we'll see what we can do about bringing that number down.
And then, so with the, with the federal law, you're going to, you'll have authority to approve or disapprove the comp time? Right, so it's not an automatic?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Okay. All right. Just a question on, so looking at page 299 of the budget book, so there's the Walking Beat shortfall and the Commission on Disability shortfall. So I guess, Ms. Sahadi just spoke to the shortfall of the Commission on Disability. That was on page 318, and I just wanted to double-check something, I'm sorry.
So Counselor, I actually serve on the Disability Commission, and the Disability Commission is, you know, committed to the 128,000 to offset the cost. They are aware that they're not fully covering all of the expenses associated with it, and, but they're also looking at perhaps purchasing vehicles for the police department. So it's, it's become a kind of cooperative and collaborative effort for them to give as much as they feel that they can and still meet their other requirements.
So no, I just had, I had a note there, because I wasn't sure exactly what the shortfall was, but then Ms. Sahadi mentioned it in her presentation to one of the councils, so I'm good with that. So the Walking Beat shortfall, though, can we, can we explain that? Do we not just apply for, I mean, we know who the individuals are for the Walking Beats, right, that we usually give to CDA?
At the beginning of the, of, beginning of the contract, we know who they are. And then, my understanding of CDAs, we apply for an amount, and they give us an amount. I don't think necessarily we always get what we apply for. So sometimes you have to have a shortfall. And throughout the course of the year, people transfer in and out, they either get promoted or, you know, want to go back to uniform patrol, and so that affects, because they all make different amounts, it can affect the numbers.
So did we extend the, so what do we, do we apply for the full year, or is it just, what's the Walking Beats? Is it just during the summer months, spring, summer months, or?
The CDA Walking Beats are year-round.
Year-round?
Yeah. So they, and it's a combination of walk, ride, to be totally transparent. They do have cruisers, so they can respond to emergency calls, but they primarily go park the cruiser and they walk around in the neighborhoods, and then they respond to calls within the CDA areas.
Right. Okay. And then, the overtime for the special civic events, we originally, FY '19 had 45,000 budgeted. Actuals came in at 136,000, and we're only budgeting 86,000, so I guess my only question is, did we budget enough? Was it an anomaly for '19?
What page do you want, sir?
Sorry, 299.
299.
But a quarter of the, a quarter of the way up from the bottom of the page.
So we're not having the boat races this year. And then, some of, when we, when we went through here, there was some money being paid out of some lines that belonged in other lines, so it got moved around, and that happened in expenses as well. Just to make it, I have a new administrative assistant, and so we both really went through it this year, and...
So you say in the 136, not everything should have, so the actuals that are currently, as they appear in this line item, should have been allocated somewhere else?
Some of, that 136, for example, some of that money from the South Main Street extra patrols came out of there. And then there was, because we were trying to get a clearer picture of what we spend a year.
Yep.
So we were allowed to overspend a line, not the bottom line, but in within...
No, I recognize that, yeah.
Right, so that's how we get our historical...
And I'm okay with the overrun there, I'm just trying to figure out now, has that become my true number for the overtime required for the civic duties, and we're only budgeting 86,000?
Right, so we hope so, because the 100,000 for the, for South Main Street probably, we hope, won't happen again, so...
When you say the South Main, was that just the roadwork, or what do you mean by the South?
No, it was the, when we had the shooting.
Oh, down, okay, I'm sorry.
And we put extra patrols and...
That was on the opposite end of the South Main.
Yeah. So when those things occur, so we were trying to get a better picture of what we were spending, we said, okay, we'll take it out of special events, it's a special event, so to speak. Then we'll see how that goes. So I think, I hope that the 86 is enough. I know, like, like you said, the boat races are not going to happen, most current information is. So we're hoping that that'll cover, it's basically Holy Ghost Feast, Gates of Portugal, and then some other smaller events that occur, but not a significant amount when we look at the bigger picture.
Okay. Okay. And then the other overtime, the beyond tour of duty, am I assuming, am I correct in assuming that that's for, so if an officer is towards the end of his shift, that he has to go to a call and then obviously do a report or something like that, that he gets that extended time?
Exactly, yes.
So are we, so the increase in that, are we seeing more of that or is it, is that just due to potentially staffing levels?
Combination, it'll, it'll, so it's due, it's based on the past, you know, what we spent in the past. And I'm sure that's impacted by the staffing levels. Although in that particular line, because you never know when you're going to get that last minute call.
Right.
So it's a combination, but yeah, that.
Have we looked at impact shifts in terms of, you know, maybe, what do we do again? What, is it eight to fours, four to midnight?
Right now, yeah, basically it's seven thirty to three thirty, three thirty to eleven thirty. And then, and then they, of course, there's an overlap.
I guess, so have we looked at doing potentially maybe an impact shift in between those shifts, so you have somebody on?
We're, we're looking at some things that I can't really talk about right now because we're in collective bargaining. But yeah, it is on our radar to do something to get more officers out in the busier hours to help with some of this, what we're talking about.
And then the, on page three hundred, education. Is that for the Quinn or is that?
Yes, that's Quinn.
Quinn. So what's the, I'm assuming the decrease is the sixteen people coming off, so assuming that some of the older officers have Quinn, high Quinn status?
Also, there was, there was a change with the superior officers, I believe, where instead of getting paid semi-annually, they get paid bi-weekly. So the Quinn will be in their salary line rather than in this, this line right here. And so it will reduce this, but part of it too is I'm sure some people that left had degrees.
Okay. And then weekend differential, so I see that we had one twenty-five, we're looking to do the one thirty, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, it's in the middle of page three hundred. There were no actuals though?
That was the last collective bargaining agreement. It was, so it started mid, somewhere, somewhere around mid-budget, I believe. So we didn't have a full year of data.
So what's the, can you explain the weekend differential? I mean, I, I think it's self-explanatory, but I just, I'm trying to figure out.
So if they work between Friday at four and a shift that ends, I believe it's Monday morning at midnight, they get a stipend or a differential.
So even if you're on your four and twos, if you're working on the, so any, any shift that's rotating on towards the, to the weekend get, would then get a weekend differential?
Right. And so that was very confusing. So we took an average, we negotiated, we took an average with the union and they actually all get the same, anyone assigned nights gets the same amount. So some, some weeks they work more weekends, some weeks they work less weekends. So it's really an average of what they work. We agreed on a number, this is the average, this is what we'll.
But it's not the night shift though, it's all?
It's weekend, days and nights.
Days and nights.
Yeah, any weekend shift.
Okay. All right. All right. Then the confidential employee police, is that, is that the new position, the very last salary? You see that?
I don't know what that is. Confidential employee.
So it just says confidential employee police, I'm not sure.
I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on that, I'm not.
And it doesn't even seem like a, a full-time salary anyways.
It's not, it's not a salary. I know that. It might be a stipend or something.
Okay.
I'd have to look at.
Yeah, if you can just get back to me on that, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'd have to look at my sheet back at the office with the detail on it.
Just going into expenses, page three oh two, other communications, so you're going from six thousand to thirty-three thousand. So it looks, so you got some, the uninterrupted power supply batteries, is that?
Well, those batteries have to be replaced every so often.
Yep.
And I think that's another situation where we did move some things around.
What's, what's the Motorola?
That's Motorola will be radios, either the consoles and the dispatch center or the portable radios. It should stay over on the other side. And then we have a service contract.
And then the three oh four, just, I know we get grants for the, for the vests, but we had some, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there for FY nineteen for, for vests. And I think the note's still in there, it's, it's from last year. So it looks like we, that one twenties was, was for ten vests for new hires, is that accurate?
And replacement vests, they have an expiration date, so.
So we're all up to?
Right. So we have a list of officers and when they receive the vest. And we do the best we can to stagger it. So we know this year how many vests we anticipate buying, which I don't have that number right off the top of my head. And then we'll have to buy vests for the new officers.
Okay. That was going to be my question was, because I don't see anything budgeted in here, so.
Counselor, that's because we moved it to a special revenue fund, Fund forty-five eighty-five. So the twenty thousand that you're seeing here is the residual beyond the amount of the grant that will be due.
Is that just a, is that a new special revenue or is that just forfeiture monies?
It is. No, no, it's new for this particular grant. It was just easier to monitor it in the grant than to be looking for the cash receipt or the reimbursement in the police department's operating expenses.
All right. And then just shifting over to the, the animal control piece, so per diem?
We have a, one of our animal control officers that is going to be out of work. So the two remaining can't handle all the work, so there's, we're going to hire a per diem.
Temporary?
A temporary, yeah. It'll be, it's not, not an employee, he's going to be like a contractor.
And then my, my final question was in regards to the list that you had provided to us. So if you go to three ten, we've, we've got sergeants, so there's two vacancies there. Are they, so it doesn't seem like we're adding any new positions, but are we making any changes for the amount of officers, superior officers we're having? Or is that two vacancies due to two individuals leaving? And then my, my question would also, the follow-up is, is that one of them's getting paid ninety-five thousand, the other one's seventy-four thousand, so?
So one of those vacancies was recently filled. An sergeant retired, so we had, there's a lag time making the promotion. So one of the vacancies was filled. The other one is a new position. It's, it's, it's right now a temporary sergeant's position and we want to make it permanent because we have the need. And I failed to mention too earlier, there's also a temporary lieutenant's position in here that is going to take, take up some of the slack from lieutenants that are retiring that, as we talked about, they're using their time. So I need a temporary spot just to fill a supervisory role. But I do not at this time intend to, once I make that temporary lieutenant, I don't think I'm going to make the temporary sergeant unless I find that I need it. I'm going to try not to do it.
So you're going to try, so the second vacancy?
So the second vacancy is the temporary, the current temporary.
You're not going, you're going to try to do the temporary lieutenant and make, make that one permanent or?
No, I'm going to make the temporary lieutenant when the, when.
Temporary until, until you can?
When the lieutenant retires, I'll make a permanent lieutenant and not fill the temporary spot.
Gotcha.
These two positions here, one is, was existing, but we didn't know who was going to be in it.
Yep.
And the second one is, it is actually a request to make a temporary sergeant's position permanent. So we will increase our complement of sergeants to thirty-one.
Do you, do you have an, I, I could do it myself, it's just not broken down that way. Do you know the number of sergeants, lieutenants?
I do.
Captains?
Is a.
So you got one, one chief, two deputies?
Yep, four captains.
Four captains.
Currently, today, with the, with the temporary sergeant, we have thirty-one.
But that would be the sergeants, you're saying?
Thirty-one sergeants right now. And we'll go to, we'll go, we'll go to thirty-two. I'm sorry, I misspoke. It will go to thirty-two if I, if this temper, if this new one is, is approved. The lieutenants, we currently have thirteen and the temporary will make fourteen. But again, those, that number includes the ones that are not, that are pending retirement.
Okay.
And, and then officers, right, right now, today, we have a hundred and seventy officers.
You got one seventy?
Yes.
This is only showing one sixty-one, so is that one seventy?
I think because they put some of them on the other page, on that three eighteen.
Oh, is this, so it's, so it's all, all the patrols, when you, so when you go to that, three eighteen, they're not appearing anywhere else except for this?
That's correct, because they're, that is correct, they're paid out of the grants.
Patrol, patrol.
Page three eighteen. So there are twenty-three that are paid out of the grants.
So one eighty-four, you said one seventy?
We have, we have one seventy, but we have the vacancies. That doesn't include the vacancies.
All right. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Consul on seat five, Council Vice President of the Board.
Thank you. Hi, Chief.
Hi.
On page three oh one, the traffic signal replacements, there wasn't anything budgeted for last year. This year, this forty-two, three hundred, it says vehicle detection and preemption system. Is that when emergency vehicles are approaching the traffic lights?
Yes, that's, that's part of those two lines, traffic signal maintenance and traffic signal replacements are for repairs. A lot of our traffic lights are older. We were lucky enough last year to get money from a state through Representative Fiola to do, to address the worst ones on Bedford Street. So those have been taken care of. This is the next phase, we'll get the next, the next batch that's worse. And then the, the preemption system, we intend to put the lights, yes, the flashing lights that turn all the lights, the direction that the emergency vehicle's coming from.
And that works for police, fire, EMS?
It works for, yeah, and there's a, like a light that you have to install. And so that cost is the cost of the unit that goes on the, on the light. And we don't have them in our cruisers currently, so that will include the cost of putting them in the cruisers.
That includes putting in the cruisers and on the traffic signals? I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes?
Yeah. In the intersections that we're going to do, we're not going to do all the intersections at once, right?
And do fire and EMS have those in their vehicles as well?
I don't know if they all have them or not, you'd have to, I, Chief.
And on page three oh two, I noticed, and someone had just asked me about this, and I didn't see it in last year's budget, the canine line item for fourteen-five, it's the vet bills for canines, first checkups, was that something that we didn't pay for in the past?
We didn't, we didn't have, we weren't budgeted for it in the past, so we requested it this year.
So the officers themselves were taking?
No, we were just finding the money elsewhere in the budget, which I, I felt that we needed to have a place to get it.
So does that take care of all the vet bills for the canines or are the officers that have them, living with them over the, it says that thousand, canine vet bills, that a thousand each for five thousand dollars? Does that take care of all the needs?
It should, that's what we anticipate, unless there's an emergency. It should take care of the routine care of the, of the animals and some, some extraordinary occurrences, if there are any.
Is there ever a time when the, the handler of the dog has to take care of those vet bills?
No.
It's always?
They'd always be reimbursed. And, and they've actually set up a fund recently.
I saw that.
So that, that, some money for the care of the animals will come out of that fund as well.
Okay. But that's separate from this?
That's separate from this, it's just not up, funded. I anticipate at some point, this number should go down as they're able to absorb some more costs of the care and stuff.
On page three oh four, surveillance, surveillance. I know that we've talked about this a few times, that you've wanted to have cameras throughout the city. It wasn't funded last year and it's not funded again. Is there other places that you're getting funds for cameras or are we just not doing them?
We are. There was a, like a bond recently. So we're at a stage right now where, I believe you remember, we talked about the microwave link that's going to go down pretty much the center of the city. And we're going to tie into the Bayburn Tower, that, the tower up in Copacabana that Bayburn is, is constructing. So in that bond money, there was enough for twenty-four cameras. And we won't be able to install much more than that. The bid was just awarded and the contracts are being done right now to install the backbone. And then after that, we'll run the cameras off of it. So next year, we'll probably be looking for money to add more cameras.
To add more cameras, but this takes care of the first twenty-four?
Yes, the, the bond takes care of the first twenty-four, yeah.
And how long about do you think that that will be till it's completed?
The entire project will be.
This part of the project, the twenty-four cameras and?
The twenty-four that we're working on now, he, by, by the fall is, is the target. But it's going to depend on if they run into any problems when they start to actually do the construction. But we anticipate that sometime around September, October, we, we would see the first cameras going online and before the end of the year, they'll all be installed.
And then I just have one other question, but it might be for Mary. Mary, when there is a lawsuit and that funds need to be paid out, where does that come from? Like there was recently an article about a police department lawsuit that the city had to pay.
It, it would come out of Judge Macy's budget.
It does come out of his budget. Okay. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further for our, Counselor on seat three, Counselor Camara?
Just a quick question. Mrs. Bouchard and I and Counselor Vavaris and a few others are on a committee reviewing the charter. It's chaired by Mike Mioza. And I think Mr. Poole and is also a member of that. And specifically, the committee has recommended to the council that, that the police board be looked at with possible elimination of the board. Does the board meet or has it met any time in the near future? Is there any reason why the board, is there any function currently for the police board?
The board, to my knowledge, has not met in some time. I, and I don't know why you'd have to, that's a question for the chairman of the board. He sets the meetings, I, I don't. However, in ordinance, when we do interviews for promotions or hiring, we are supposed to, we were supposed to have one member of the board present, which we do, we have for the past two years. And they do come in, Mr. Reitzes and Mr. Cabral have come in several times each for that.
Well, it's an item that's in ordinance committee, it's not a big budget item, it's only forty-five hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars per board member. But if it's, again, if it's a board that doesn't have a role or function, and Mr. Mioza was a board member, and he was the one that basically was pointing out the fact that he seems that it really doesn't have a significant role or function, so.
So that's changed, we do have them in now for interviews. And if I can say that if they, I don't know why they haven't met. To me, the function of the board and my, one of my goals was to make them more relevant. And one of the functions of the board is to serve as a liaison between the community and the police department. So if people have an issue that they don't feel they can come to an officer with or come to me with, they can go to a board member and they can bring that to my attention or the city's, the proper person. And I'd like to see that happen. So, you know, I defer to the judgment of the, of the committee, but I think that they do have a role, they could have a role, and I'd like to see that happen.
Now, now, might, might that role be something similar to what a community review board would be? So if a citizen had a citizen complaint, they could bring it to a review board that might make a recommendation to the chief or to the department?
They, they could, in an advisory capacity, I don't see, I wouldn't see a problem with that, if that's something that they'd wanna take on, um...
Okay, let's just, I just want a little clarification as, uh, as the council considers how it might, uh, address that question, other than that, no, I have no questions, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel, I think further for our Chief. Counsel, Seat One?
Thank you.
Counsel on Seat One, Counsel Akadeem?
You can, I'll yield to Counsel on Seat Seven.
Sorry, I didn't see him, Counsel on Seat Seven, Counsel LaBelle there.
Yeah, just, uh, one question, uh, surplus equipment, um, have you handled your home, uh, surplus, or does it go to the contingency business?
So in general, um, we dispose of surplus police equipment, things that are bought with city money.
Mm-hmm.
Through the purchasing agent, with the exception of, in the past, uh, year or so, cars, because they take up so much room, so we've done separate auctions with those through the purchasing department, but we, we've handled that, um, that auction. And then, uh, the other category of property that we dispose of is found property or evidence that's, uh, turned over to us, which we, which we do separately, um, I'll, we follow the purchasing guidelines, and, uh, the purchasing agent helps us, but we run that entire process and do an auction, usually around once a year, and we have enough items to make it worth it to, uh, to do the auction.
August fifteenth to eighteenth, so this, uh, communication, purchase agent, uh, supplies property at the Ford Police Department, so what does that mean? You had supplies that you wanted to get rid of?
We probably had surplus equipment or supplies that we didn't need anymore, I know that, um, two thousand eighteen, August, we probably got rid of some file cabinets because we redid an office.
Yeah.
Um, it may, it might have been a vehicle or two in that, but our bigger vehicle auction was, um, probably after that, um, I'm trying to think, it's, and it's other, it's things like, uh, maybe there's computers, although those have been going over to MIS lately, uh, in the past, it had been computers, but really, anything that we buy, that we don't use or don't need anymore, goes through that disposal process.
Alright, so that, the money stays in your department?
Um, no, the money that's bought with city funds, uh, goes back to the general fund.
Okay.
Money, uh, money from evidence and seized property does stay with us, which, so we can use, um, we, we use that for our needs.
Okay, are you familiar with, uh...
Can I get a point of order on, just on surplus property, Madam, Madam Clerk, does City Council have to vote on, um, take a vote on a resolution for, to declare surplus property?
Generally, the purchasing agent furnishes the council with a list of surplus property, and the council votes to authorize...
Is that once a year, or is it as, on a, as needed basis?
Typically, it's once a year.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
I, I, you know, I vaguely, uh, remember the last one that we had, and, you know, prior years, we used to, at least once a year, get a nice form and everything that's being sold and everything else, and Kathy, I really don't see that anymore, is that happening or not happening?
Well, um, Counselor, I, I checked with the purchasing agent, she actually provided me with her, you know, the standard memo that she sends out, but she said, this past year, there were no, uh, materials or items that were provided to her that were requiring, um, disposal.
Right.
So it's up to the departments what in, what, you know, items they wanna have disposed of.
I get a little frustrated when I go different places and, and they say, they dumped a whole bunch of stuff that could have been sold, I mean, who caused that shot, is it her? And then, I was down in Incinerator today, and the guy says, hey, there's a whole bunch of stuff back there, and there was, I went down, there's a couple of fire trucks, a couple of ambulances, a vehicle, and it's just staying there, I mean, it should be a better effort, I think, on her part to say, hey, I mean, you can send the form out, but if you miss the form, and it just, just stays there, that's all.
She, she does follow up, Counselor.
She does.
But again, if the departments don't tell her that they have items that need to be auctioned, then it's not happening, I almost, uh, wonder, some of those items that you talk about, I, I've seen some of them, they're in pretty poor condition, so it's possible that...
But you still gotta get rid of it.
They tried to dis...
It's just staying there.
But they may have tried to dispose of it, and, you know, no, there were no takers.
No literature on it, no effort, if it's been there for two or three years, I mean, clean it up, that's all, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, anything further? Counsel on Seat One, Counsel Akadeem?
Thank you, uh, Chief, I apologize, so, uh, quick question on the overtime, are we at a point now, we're, oh, have we been at a point where, with all the vacancies that we, we're filling one for one for overtime, or...
Uh, well, to, to staff the, uh, the street, no.
Yeah.
No.
No, okay.
We still have, um, we still start every shift, for the most part, unless, you know, they're sick and, you know, certain things happen, but for the most part, we start every shift with, uh, with at least twelve cars.
Okay, so is, is that what the, um, patrolling is, is now, is that the twelve cars?
That's, um...
I know we're at ten for, for some time, and...
There are times where it goes to ten, um, it doesn't go below ten, except in rare instances, uh, but twelve is our, we have twelve, we have fif, uh, fourteen sectors, twelve are the ones that we work with all the time, if we have extra people, we activate the other two.
Okay, so if, if we get to the two thirty-seven, and I know we'll probably be chasing that for a little while, um, how many, how many cars do we anticipate to be on patrol? And I know there's other, there's other...
Right, so...
Specialty units that are on at the same time with the patrols, I'm just, but I'm just trying to...
Right, I'm just talking about, you know, when I say twelve, you, you know, I'm talking about the sectors, the uniform...
Yep.
Nine-one response, um, so if we had two thirty-seven, then we'd be probably trying to put out fourteen cars, uh, every shift, and then, um, some of those officers would also go to some of these other special shifts where I have vacancies that I can't fill right now.
Okay, uh, and then, just in terms of your, your equipment, so, uh, I know we talked a little bit about it last year, the tasers, so I, I don't see any of that being purchased, are we good with tasers for the officers?
Tasers would be in, um...
Did I miss that? I, I see that we got the portable radios, I got a question on that, but...
You need to, I know we need, uh, taser cartridges.
Yeah, I see, I see that under the ammunition, armory supplies.
Yeah, it was moved into the armorist line.
So it looks like, again, fifteen, is that...
Yeah, it sounds about right.
Is that, is that, is that, nope, accurate?
Yeah, yeah, fifteen, yep, they have a, believe it or not, they have a bit of a shelf life, uh, as well.
So what's that, what's that fifteen get us, do all the officers have them, or...
All the, uh, although, uniform patrol officers have them, and then, uh, in the divisions, there are a limited number available, and then the supervisors on the patrol have them, um, that's assuming that none are broken, or, you know...
But uniform officers have the tasers?
Yep.
They all do?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then your portable radios, how, how's that working, I know we had some, uh, some conversations back and forth where maybe some of the officers didn't wanna have their own personal radios, 'cause they don't wanna be responsible for the take-home of those, but...
Right.
Do, do we have enough, with that twenty-five, do we have enough, or do you feel comfortable with the, the amount of radios that we have, and...
That should give us enough for every officer that wants a radio to have one, which is, I won't say every officer, but pretty much every officer, after the last time we spoke at, at the council about it, um, and we had bought some radios and given them out, and then we got another influx of requests.
Okay.
So we're trying to, uh, fill those, and that should take care of everyone, um, along with, um, I believe this, I'm not sure if they stayed in the capital request or not, um... There was, there was a capital request at one point for radios, and I'm not sure what, if they stayed in there, oh yeah, there's another twenty-five in there.
Yeah, twenty-five portables, I see that, yeah.
And then, then I, I believe there's some replacements in the budget itself, because they also wear out.
Then my, just my other que, question is just on the, uh, the vehicles, so, um, I saw we obviously purchased some, some new vehicles, so you have in here, and, and the amount just seems, seems off, but you, three unmarked cars and one supervisor, and, you only have ninety-nine thousand budget?
Yes, that should be, for four cars, that should be okay, um, because the unmarked cars are a lot cheaper than the, uh...
Than the pursuit rated?
Yeah, um, and the, uh, it's the equipment, the lights, and all that.
Right, right.
Radios, and then, um, there's also some other in the, uh, right, I believe that's gonna be bonded for later.
Um, I'm sorry.
As we go out.
Um, yes, I, I, I'd have to look back at the capital improvement plan, but I believe we have them, and actually, I'm not even sure if I stuck it in here, but, um, I, I believe we have a rotation now to, to rotate and purchase, um, police vehicles in each of the next five years.
Alright, okay, that's, that's what I want to know, thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel, anything further? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief.
As we continue public safety, you'll have, um, fire emergency management, um, and if it's okay with the council, we can also have EMS come down as well, if you wanna do it all as one, okay, so you'd be on page two eight zero in your public safety book, alright, let's try that again, in your budget book, under the public safety tab, um, and welcome EMS down as well, uh, they are, uh, they begin on page three four nine, three four nine for EMS. Floor is yours, Chief, and, uh, if you wanted to give a brief overview of your department as well, any changes, anything you foresee, any needs that you have.
Well, to start off...
Page two eight zero.
To start off, we've increased our complement by five positions, bringing us to a budget of one ninety-five, up from one ninety, uh, those five positions are on a safer grant, uh, twenty-five percent is city-owned, the rest is the safer grant itself. In addition to that, for the first time ever, we're gonna be outfitting the mechanics with their, with, uh, with tools, where before, they used their own tools, so you can see there's an item there for seventy-eight thousand dollars, so that's to take care of that, proud of it. Just started last year, the new recruits are now being trained to be EMTs by us, so you can see an item there for, uh... On page two eighty-three. No, I'm sorry, two eighty-four, the last item, recruit EMT certification program, thirteen seven three zero, so that's something new that we started with this last class, where we actually train our firefighters for six weeks, and get them EMT certified, because that's the goal of this department eventually, that we're all gonna be, uh, integrated, and that everybody will have the capability of, of responding as EMTs. So you see, that school is the first time ever, um, aside from that, there's not many big changes in our budget. Most of our apparatus has been replaced, uh, one other thing you'll see is that we are getting four new cars, we have electric cars, now they're on a lease, the leases are coming up, so it's in the budget to replace those with either a new lease of electric cars, or four, uh, gasoline cars.
Thank you, Counsel on Seat Four, Counsel Kilby?
Yep, uh, just one question, you, you mentioned the apparatus, Chief.
Yes.
You know, um, and I hear great strides, obviously, have been accomplished through your leadership in municipal government to upgrade the fleet, um, how, how many years you been on the department?
Uh, thirty-three.
Thirty-three, have you ever seen the apparatus at a point, um, as, as modern as it is now, or, or, um, in the years?
Not quite this good, I think we're very fortunate, I can't take full credit for that, obviously, I think it's the administration, and also, uh...
Community development?
What's that?
Community development play a part in that?
Yes, absolutely, a huge part in that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good partnership, and, uh, as you well know, we were in dire straits right up until a few years ago, where it was critical, and so hopefully, that won't happen again, I think you'll see my capital improvement plan that, going forward, even though we have almost the whole fleet replaced, it's my intention before I leave, that we'll have a regular replacement program, so you can see that in the capital improvement plan, so...
Very good, yeah, I remember when I first came on as a, a counselor, um, the apparatus was just horrendous, and the condition of some of your, your pumps, and, you know, every item, so, um, so that's really the only question I had, but, um, I said it privately before the meeting, Chief, I respect you a great deal, I think, uh, you're such a great asset to this community, you're truly a pe, a people's, um, a, a people's chief, and, um, I saw you, uh, the other day outside with the, uh, with the, uh, the boot, you know, collecting money with...
Tipped the helmet, tipped the helmet.
With the helmet, yeah, um, working really hard in the heat, and, um, with that smile on your face, so, um...
I haven't lost it yet, Counsel, I might be old, but I'm not, I'm not ready to go yet.
No, you're not, but I know you're rank and file, really, really respect you, and I think the community does, and we're lucky to have you.
Well, thank you, I think a good part of it is that I have good people around me, that's what, what makes me come to work every day.
Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Counsel on Seat Five, Counsel Vice President LaBelle.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, I have a, a couple of questions, Chief, in, in the beginning of the tab, it says that, um, you are approaching the NFPA standards, and my question is, as it relates to having four men on a truck?
That helps, yes.
Or firefighters on a truck?
And also the, the squad, the firefighter and the squad also helps, and the fact that we have not had any brownouts, so we've been able to maintain that, for most of the shifts, we've had a, a shift strength of thirty-five.
So my question is, it says on here that, um, you've been able to maintain the four firefighters at the single-engine firehouses, how many single-engine firehouses are there?
There are two, one at the Globe Station, and one at the North End Station.
And then all the others are multi-engine firehouses?
Uh, well, usually an engine and a ladder, or the center is an engine and a heavy rescue.
Alright, but those have not got to four people on a...
No, they have not.
Okay.
And the heavy rescue has never had four on it.
Always three on that?
Always three on that, since nineteen fifty.
Okay. Can you talk to me a little bit, I know we've talked about it, about, um, Squad Eleven, that, that's the one that we are staffing with a firefighter half-time, is that correct?
Well, it's staffed fully with a firefighter, but the firefighters, there are ten that are assigned to squad.
Mm-hmm.
But they only serve fifty percent of their time on squad, so the other half, they're detailed to, uh, an engine company, or a ladder company, or a heavy rescue.
Okay, and where is the funding, um, from that to staff that position?
Five of those, five of those ten positions, because they're serving on, uh, a, um, a medical rescue, which is kinda squad, uh, half of those guys are paid for by EMS Enterprise Fund.
And the other half is paid through your department?
Through, yeah, through our salaries.
Just the regular salary line item?
Yes, yep.
So Counselor, the ones that are paid by, um, EMS are on page three forty-nine, um, in their salary category, it's the second line down.
So you've taken five, and EMS has taken five, it's not really a fifty-fifty split on ten of them, correct?
Well, it amounts to fifty percent.
It amounts to that, but it's five, five hole, five hole, okay, um, and Chief, how are you doing with overtime?
Uh, right now, we're, uh, probably gonna have to transfer some funds, it's almost the end of the year, and we're pretty close to, uh, depleting the municipal overtime account.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've already used half of the EOPS grant, and we always save the other half for the, uh, the second half of the year.
Mm-hmm.
So, and right now, it looks like we're gonna have to, uh, transfer some funds.
And transfer them from where?
Uh, probably, I would say, it'd be maybe it's called, but probably salaries or some other item, we still have money left in it.
So you, do you think you have enough money in your, in your budget to transfer those funds, or is it...
I, I, we looked at it, and it, I think we're gonna have enough, yes.
Now, does that mean one of those line items, you might, um, hold off on doing something that you need, because you need those funds for overtime?
No, not really, because the salaries line item, uh...
There's, um, Counselor, there's only one week left, this last week, and there's money left in the salaries and wages permanent line, so it's, it's...
And how much is left in that?
Um, I did, no, I did bring that with me.
If you hold on one second, I can dig it out. 'Cause I know we, we've told you on the, on the floor, Chief, in the past, that if you were gonna be short on overtime, we wanted you to come back and, and tell us, and that...
Yep.
Sentiment still exists.
Well, thank you. Well, it sounded like she was, wants to give it to me.
The total salary category should have two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars left.
And that will take care of what you need, Chief?
Yes.
That's including all the projections, so that's the turnback at June thirty.
Okay, and I have a, a couple of the questions as far as, um, some equipment, can you tell me what happened to the, and I might say this wrong, the Claxton system this year, I know it went down?
It went down, and because it was so old, and it happened toward the end of the year, obviously, I think it was, uh, maybe six weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
It was a surprise for us, and because it was so old, you couldn't get parts for it, so basically, what had to be done was it had to be fabricated, so it took six weeks to fabricate this one part, to get the system up and running again.
And could you just explain what the Claxton system is for people that might not know?
Okay, the Claxton system is a notification system to the stations, so when an alarm comes in to fire dispatch, the dispatcher reads it, and then they open up the switches to the stations, and they dispatch the, uh, apparatus to each station, it has to respond to that fire, or whatever the emergency is, by that, what we call a Claxton system, it's a, uh, basically a, um, an intercom system.
So, we were able to fix it this time, but it, it took quite a while, so what, what do we have as a plan for next time, or for upgrading the system to something that's not?
Yeah, but we looked at, uh, redundancy, so we're looking at the, may, uh, almost the same type of system, we're looking at a new system, and then we're looking to get some critical parts for the old system right now, just as a patchwork thing, so those are three plans that we have in place, obviously, what we would like to do is replace it with a totally new system.
Now, is that anywhere in your budget, or in your capital improvement plan?
Uh, it was not, because it came at the very end of the year, after they had already submitted the capital improvement plan, and we didn't know how bad it was until the system went down, and then Chris Hathaway, who oversees all that, came in, and he came to me, and he says, Chief, that system is so old, we really gotta start to look into replacing it, so...
What happened in the six weeks that it was down, what did they do without the system?
What they did is they used, like a lot of other, um, cities and towns, though, it's just by radio.
That brings me to my next question, the radios. I know we, we've had this conversation before too and, and there are some areas of the city where the radio, um, communication strength isn't as clear, um, as it could be. How are we addressing that?
Well, we looked into putting more transmitters and receivers in different areas of the city. Chris Hathaway is also gonna propose on that. So he's gonna relocate some of the, uh, the equipment we have. Like we have stuff on Cottle-Madera's Towers, we have it, uh, at the Candace Fire Station. We have it at, um, I think Paresi Heights. So there's a few other places that we like to relocate and also put new stuff in.
So did you ask for the funds for new transmitters and receivers?
We did put it in, yes.
In the budget or in the capital improvement?
Well, in the capital improvement plan. But again, we have to look into where we're gonna get that money.
Okay. So, um, that one just makes me nervous because, and it's mostly in the North End that that happens, correct?
Mostly, yes, especially down like with fall winds. We had some type of communication problems there at the New Year's Day Fire.
For, for additional transmitter, transmitters and receivers, what would the cost be? Any idea?
I figure what the quote was, I, I know it's over a hundred thousand dollars. Might be a hundred, a hundred and twenty.
And, and how many would that get you?
I think that gets us, uh, two new, uh, transmitters, receivers and also relocating one of the ones we have now. Because one of the fears we have is that a lot of our equipment's on Cottle-Madera's Towers. So let's say something went down in Cottle-Madera's Towers. It takes out a lot of that equipment. So we wanna spread it around so we don't run into that situation.
I know that, um, if you were listening to, if you listen to the radio, at, anytime there's a call in, in the North End or particularly in that fire, um, when communication is lost, it, it, um, a little bit of panic sets in and, and people realize that, you know, we have firefighters that can't be heard from or, or there's no communication there. And I, I really wouldn't want that to have to wait for a capital improvement plan and then, you know, something to happen in the meantime. I, I think that that's, um, a necessity, um, to keep everybody safe.
Sure. Are you gonna give me that money too?
I, I would, I would be in favor of, of this being addressed in this budget. We, we just should never not be able to reach a firefighter that's in a building.
Totally.
Um, and I, I did hear you say about future apparatus. I was gonna bring that up. We started putting in for that. So the Section one oh eight law was in, uh, two thousand and sixteen, so it's been three years and we haven't seen any, uh, plan for how we're gonna fund in the future and, um, we don't want to get to that point again. So at, at three years later, I would have hoped we would see before now, but, but we'll see it in your capital improvement plan.
Well, it's my intention to stay on this. I've got three more years and hopefully when I walk out the door, we'll have this in place. So the next, um, fire chief that comes in won't have to deal with this on such a grand scale. They will have it in the plan and it'll be a regular thing like anything else. So I, I think we're on the right road here.
And then my last question is, um, there's a, a line item now for turnout gear, which we're able to do for every new person.
Every new person and also, um, existing firefighters that need new gear.
That what, that their gear is past the, um, date?
Yes, past the date or if it gets damaged. And then our other intention is to keep that in there because once we replace everybody's with new equipment, it's our intention to have a second round so that everybody has two sets of gear.
Now you're getting crazy, Chief. Two sets of gear.
Well, that's, it, it's important because if you think about it, you go to a fire and you come back from a fire, it's loaded with those carcinogens and we have these wonderful washers and dryers now to clean them. So you throw them in, so what are you gonna do now if you have another fire? You have to throw some gear on.
Otherwise, they have to come in on an off day to, to do that?
Well, you don't wanna wear your dirty gear.
No, to continue to wear it.
You know, once you get back to the station...
I agree, I agree with you.
Take it off, wash it right away and put your second set of gear on.
So is there enough in that line item, um, for this to continue to happen for the new recruits and also for...
There is right now, yes.
Okay. Where are we at in that line item? I know this was done as of March thirty-first. Do we have an update on that?
I didn't bring it with me today, Counselor.
And I know that, um, there was just some training done, police, fire and EMS for active shooter.
Yes.
And is that...
So that's, that was replenished. I know exactly what, what you're talking about here.
Okay. So that gear, I know, was the fire department, I think I had called Mary on this, the fire department was tasked with paying for it, but was going to be reimbursed by police and EMS, correct?
Yes, and then we were. So the item we had to take it out of was that turnout gear line item.
Okay.
So we were worried that if we didn't get that money back, that we weren't gonna be able to buy, um, the fifteen cents of gear for the new recruits who are coming on. But we were reimbursed, so we're good there.
You're good there. So you have enough in that, in that gear line?
We do.
To cover the new active shooter?
That was already bought, all that equipment's bought for active shooter and our account was reimbursed.
Perfect. All right, so I, I just wanna make sure you're not holding off on purchasing anything that you needed, um, because there was, um, you were low on funds in any of these or in the overtime line?
I think we're good.
Excuse me. So I would just reiterate again to the administration that, um, where we, we know we have an issue with radios in the North End and if transmitters and receivers will help. Now, these are the new radios, correct? Newer radios?
Well, these are newer radios, but we're also looking to replacing these radios. Right now, they're still sufficient, but again, it's just like the apparatus. If you don't start to think ahead and start to replace, you're gonna get to that critical juncture where everything fails.
How old are the radios that you have now or are they varied?
I wanna say they're, well, some are varied because we have replaced some over the years. I believe that we, most of them are new. They might be eight years old.
And will that, along with the transmitters and receivers, help the communication?
Oh, immensely, yes.
Okay. And, um, what was your plan for new radios?
Well, right now, again, we have the CDA God who's working with us and he has two options to replace those radios.
Okay. In his budget?
Yes.
But we don't have anything for the transmitters and receivers?
We looked at that and he cannot supply that because it's, it's part of infrastructure and not part of the, uh, fire funding equipment itself. CDA cannot pay for something like that. So that was the first thing that we looked at.
Okay. Is there any money being turned back by the fire department?
I don't know. We usually turn back a couple of dimes and a nickel here or two, but, uh, no, we usually, we're pretty close, but we usually do submit some money back.
Any idea how much that might be?
On the, on the expense line, um, it's, it's really hard to say. Rich Levek has indicated he doesn't expect to have any money turned back, but he's really overly conservative, so I'm not quite sure that's correct. And on the, on the salary line, it will be about a quarter of a million.
But part of that is gonna, you're gonna keep part of that for your overtime?
No, that's, that's net of the overtime. That's, that's the turnback in, in salaries in total.
I would like to, um, talk about getting the transmitters and the receivers.
We can certainly look at that, Counselor. And if we can't do it before the end of the year because we'd have to secure the purchase order and go through the exercise in order to encumber it, we can look at it from free cash in the fall when free cash is certified.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chief. I yield.
You're welcome.
Oh, wait, I have a question. Sorry, I don't yield. Are we asking just fire right now?
You can ask your EMS questions now if you have to.
I only have two EMS questions. You had mentioned the leases on the electric cars. I know that, um, Ms. Fonce uses those cars with the opioid clerk, the...
She uses one, yes, that's correct.
So is there a plan in place for, for them for, now that we're not gonna have that car?
Uh, no. There were six electric cars right now. And our plan is just replace four of those.
So we'll still have two?
We'll have four, but they'll just be dedicated to EMS and, and, uh, fire inspectors.
Wait, say that again? We have six right now?
We have six electric cars.
You're getting rid of all six?
The lease is running out.
Okay.
We might extend the lease for a couple of months. We're looking into possibly replacing them with newer generation electric cars or getting, like I said, a gasoline-powered cars. So we go with the option of the electric cars. We're looking to extending the lease on the ones we have right now, just on four.
When does that lease end?
I wanna say August.
I believe it's August.
August, yep.
Okay. How many cars? They just use the one car?
Yes.
And that, that's weekly? And I know that you were, um, nice enough to allow that to happen.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm looking towards you to, for a solution, but I'm, I'm not looking towards, at you for a solution. Okay. Has there been any, any discussion on it? On what they might do?
Not per se, no.
Okay, okay. And then the only other question I had was the opioid clerk. It's under Health and Human Services, but Beth oversees it, correct? Where is that person actually physically?
In this building.
In this building, okay. And that's still a part-time position? Has there been any talk about that, going to a full-time position?
I think we would need to speak to Ms. Fonce with regard to that.
All right, those are the only two questions I have. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Chief, in March two nineteen, you had a nineteen eighty-seven bumper truck.
Yep.
Swift plus, is that gone now?
I think it's probably down the incinerator. Might be one of the, might be one of the ones you were looking at.
Yeah, well, Swift plus, how long does it take to get rid of it? Gotta wait till October, is that what it is?
That's, that was the schedule we've been on. Every October, um, the purchasing agent sends out the memo requesting, because we usually just wanna do one auction a year unless there's a necessity to do more. The other option is, is I, I believe fire has on occasion done their own, um, auction?
Well, not, not auction per se, but, uh, some of the equipment that was bought by CDA. What we do is we're looking to get rid of it. Obviously, we have to get their permission, we have to write things up. Most of the time, we try and see if somebody will buy it, but most of the time, the apparatus is so worn and beat up, nobody really wants it. So it ends up going for scrap. So we turn that money into CDA and then he usually, again, uses it to help us out.
Thank you, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
When I'm looking at the personnel, I don't see like we have any other ones like vacancies and retirement.
Yeah, there's, there's some vacancies in there. We actually have four right now. Because originally, we were hiring eighteen recruits. We ended up hiring fifteen because at the very last second, literally like midnight, we had, um, three of the candidates refuse. And before that, we had two others that refused and we had alternates in place. So we used the alternates. So we had nobody at that point to replace those, uh, three firefighters that turned down the job.
So beginning last year, what was the complement of firefighters?
Uh, we were, we were budgeted for one ninety and I think we had one, uh, see if I have my math right. I think one seventy-two? With the vacancies. Yeah, one seventy-two, because we had eighteen, eighteen vacancies. What's that?
You finished the year off with one seventy-two?
Yes.
So moving ahead now, you still full complement at one ninety?
No, we have one ninety-five with those increases of five safer positions.
And you're hoping to hire how many new ones?
We already hired them.
Fifteen?
No, the, originally eighteen and, and three refused at the last minute, so we had to go with the fifteen that we have. So right now, we have fifteen new recruits that are being trained. We're expecting to insert them in the suppression side in, uh, August.
So that brings it to one eighty-seven?
No, that would bring it to one ninety, um, one ninety-two. Actually, one ninety-one, because we have retirement also just this month.
So you were budgeted at one ninety?
No, one ninety-five with the safer positions.
Last year, one ninety, you were at one seventy-two. This year, one ninety-five and you hired fifteen. So one seventy-two, fifteen, one eighty-seven. I'm not sure how, how we get to the numbers, so.
The only thing I can clear up is there are two vacancies in this budget. There are firefighters and the other last two firefighters that are listed.
There's actually three.
There's on two.
Because there's a name there, Gabriel Amor. No, he's not retiring. He was one of the recruits that was getting hired. And he was literally like after midnight. He serves in the military and he, he planned on staying in the military also, but they would not give him the time off for the weeks of training that we have. So he had to turn down the job.
Yeah, so we just... I'm trying to figure out these numbers, it's all.
Yeah.
So if we're at one seventy-two, we hired fifteen, I can go to one eighty-seven and say we're at one eighty-six. That's ten more, that's not fifteen, that's two or six.
We should be at one seventy-seven right now, not counting the recruits. Because there are eighteen, uh, openings. Not, don't count the recruits in there.
So last year, you were budgeted to one ninety?
Yes.
You're gonna finish this year at... Started with one seventy-two, what'd you finish this year at?
I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor, I can't help you. I don't have the actual payroll. I can look tomorrow as to what last week's payroll was, but...
With one ninety and eighteen openings, I still come up with one seventy-two.
Okay, so as of June thirtieth of this year?
Yeah.
Your starting level's gonna be one hundred and seventy-two men?
Of June of this year? No, because we get the eighteen guys, the, no, not eighteen, I'm sorry, fifteen.
That's all fifteen, you're gonna end up with one eighty-seven.
One seventy-five. That's fifteen, that's one seventy-five. Yeah, it was one ninety, but he, this is only fifteen, right? New recruits?
Well, there's eighteen openings.
Yeah, so there were eighteen openings, but only fifteen people are being hired.
So you're one eighty-seven plus three people, three vacancies?
Yeah, that, that would work.
So that brings you to one ninety-five. Now we're going, this year budgeted for one ninety-five.
Yes.
So at the present time, you're telling me you have eight vacancies?
No, at the present time, we're gonna have four vacancies.
No, I'm saying in this new budget, you're gonna have three that were filled in now.
Right.
And you're budgeting for five more.
Right. But there's gonna be one more vacancy because we had a firefighter just put his papers in and retired.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna have that, but I'm just saying for the numbers, the number ones, right?
Yeah.
Am I right? So what I'm saying is you're gonna tell me there's three vacancies, you're telling me there's five. But I'm, I don't know, I'm lost here, so.
Well, there were two, two vacancies and then one other individual that is in the budget is, that's the three. There are three missing.
And there's five more going into the new budget?
Yeah, five safer.
Did I take?
Yes. The safers have been already, the safers were already...
How many of the firefighters at the present time are being funded through a safer grant or any type of grant money that's going away? We're gonna end up with?
Just those five. The five that bring us to one ninety-five. They're the only ones that are on a safer grant and that's gonna be for three years.
The five new ones that are gonna...
They're already in the, the class. The bottom five guys are safer positions.
So the bottom five guys coming out of the fifteen or the five that are new in...
No, the five out of the fifteen recruits, yes. No, the five out of the fifteen recruits, yes.
Are coming under a safer grant?
Yeah, if you look on the roster.
Is that one hundred percent funded going forward?
No.
Safe for rent?
No.
How much?
The city has a twenty-five percent commitment the first year, the second year, and the third year, it's a sixty-five percent commitment.
So you're talking five guys that are gonna transition to full-time over the next five years?
Three years.
Three years?
Three years.
Three years, we put up the whole?
After three years, yes.
Five then?
That's correct.
And all the other safer grants prior to that have already been?
All expired.
Have all been?
All been absorbed, yeah.
That's good. No, it's just concerning, because I didn't see the, the way the other ones set up. I don't see the vacancies fall the way they did them. Somebody's gotta be retiring here.
If you look on page two ninety-one, Counselor, about three quarters of the way down, right after Michael Sullivan.
I see two vacancies.
Two vacancies. But if you look above, you're gonna see Michael Guzzo. Right above him is Gabriel Hamerall. Just cross his name off.
Yeah, but I, I can understand that, but I'm saying, you know, this is a pretty big outfit, so. You're only looking at two retirements, three retirements going forward?
No, we don't know. We look at the seniority list and we see.
How many did we retire this year?
How many? Uh, I think there were altogether eighteen? No, I'm sorry, pardon me, that's wrong. I can take the five safers out, so thirteen. There were thirteen retirements.
So you got pretty much a young contingency, you know what I mean?
Yes, it's getting to that point, but there's still some older guys around.
Oh, yeah, I understand, now I go to. No, I'm just saying, as you, you know, you start going, you start looking forward, I'm saying, okay, you know, what, you know, forecasting just seems like.
Well, we tried. We, we look at the seniority list, and without being obtrusive or insulting to anybody, we kind of require, well, do you think you might go this year? And sometimes they'll say, I'm definitely going July, or I'm definitely going January. But then we've already had guys say, I'm gonna do that, and then they get cold feet, because it's one of those jobs that you like to go to work every day. It's a tough job to pull away from, so.
And being, being a recent retiree, I understand that you missed the camaraderie, you missed all the interaction.
Yeah, exactly.
All of a sudden, you're all by yourself, you're like, what am I gonna do today?
I'll be going kicking, screaming too, so.
I'm not going kicking, screaming, I'm enjoying the process.
Tell me a lie.
Yeah, and I, I could just reiterate what some of my fellow colleagues are saying, your vehicles are in good shape. The equipment, I'm, I'm happy to have served in this capacity while we outfitted most of our police and fire. Very, very happy with the, the results of all that work, and I think you've done a great job. I think that the morale in the fire department's gone up, the morale in the police department's gone up. I know for a fact, as I talked to some of the men and women, so that's, that's a good thing. You're doing a great job, keep it up.
I think it's a good partnership between, you know, the administration, the counselors, and all of public safety.
And I can remember back when, you know, when you talk about the, like, sea cuts and all the, and the pig slips going on, people getting laid off, and all of those discussions back then, and just, it was disgusting. And I'm hoping that we do the right things as we're going forward, and we have to build enough our, our stabilization funds, that type of stuff, to look for that, and hopefully, we can do that going forward. I think I'm very concerned moving forward this year, in that we're not going to be doing that, I don't believe so, like we were doing over the past few years, if my calculations are correct, which concerns me. But I'm happy to say that we've progressed as far as we have at this point, and I appreciate all the work, and I want to support our fire and police one hundred percent as much as possible. But at some point, it becomes competing issues as to whether money, men, money, equipment. And hopefully, we haven't had that big of a issue with that over the last couple of years, and I'm happy to report that. But, you know, you've got to protect that moving forward, so. I've had enough questions. IU.
Thank you, Counselor, in seat one. Counselor Lecaney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I just ask the administration what the need was for the safer grant on the five new positions?
Counselor, we have been trying to increase the fire department's complement, as the chief mentioned. They would like to get to two hundred, so when we had opportunity to secure five additional positions through the safer grant, we felt it was a good opportunity for the community. As the chief mentioned, they will be fully trained as EMT basics. They will be able to work on the rescue, uh, the fire, I'm sorry, the EMS side of the, the department. And so we're gonna be able to offset the city's matching requirement on the safer grant, and expect to be able to fully absorb them into the department once the safer grant expires.
So I guess my concern with that is twofold. So I actually missed it for the police department, because I know we tend to get the EOPS, but between the EOPS and the, and the fire department, we're, we're looking at staffing employees, which are reoccurring costs for grants to the tune of roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Last night, I had asked, when we were discussing the revenues, in, in my opinion, and I, I think the administration agreed, that the revenues were extremely tight. And I had asked whether or not we thought we were gonna see some new revenues coming in, projected, and the concern was that, especially with the, generating the additional surplus at the end of the year for the free cash, there was a concern that we would be low. And so that becomes a point where it tends to show you that, you know, we're at a point, unless we see some significant changes in new revenues, we're getting to a point where we're kind of at the ceiling, right? So my concern is, is if, if we can't absorb it now, how do we plan on absorbing it two, three, four, or five years from now? When you start getting this compounding effect on the budgets not being built in? So that's, that's my concern with that, so.
If I could address that, Counselor? So, and I, Director Olivera is here with us, but we have seen over the past few years a very successful effort to increase the revenues within the EMS division. And not only have we added additional rescue, we've also, as you mentioned with the squad, we're able to get a firefighter on that squad, and that enables us to get additional reimbursements from the state because of that participation via firefighting. And additionally, we're actually looking at new services that are being developed. We're gonna be getting into community medicine. We have transfer opportunities, and I'm sure he could elaborate for you. But the EMS division in particular has done a tremendous job at increasing revenues. And because of the integration, we're able to allow the additional revenues to come in to help, you know, support both of the departments as we integrate them. So I would say that, I, I know last night, we were talking about the limited local receipts, and, you know, the ability to only increase by so much, but I would tell you, on the EMS side of things, due to new programming initiatives and additions to the, to the pieces, the reduction in the reliance on mutual aid, I mean, we're, we're not utilizing privates. We're able to capture a greater number of those EMS calls that we were not able to capture. And the chief has just said, Chief, would you like to talk about it?
One other source is the PCG reimbursement, and this year, we're getting one point five million dollars. Minus nine percent, which is the, the fee for the company that computes everything to get the, the money.
And that's fine, and I understand right now, the community medicine piece is, is really an unknown, because we don't know what state it's gonna dictate in terms of some of the, you know, home visits and things of that nature. So we don't know if it's gonna be done by the municipalities, it's gonna be done by the, you know, home visiting nurses association. So there's, there's a lot that's up in the air, so, but with that, there's gonna come some additional costs associated with that, and the amount of time that's gonna be spent going to, to these houses. So I know the revenue, as it's coming in from, from ambulance receipts, may be looking like they're coming in higher. We, we still don't know, you've still got the unknown. So my, my, my take is, is if we can afford it, because it seems like we've, we've taken a, a different approach. You know, when, when we were talking about the safer grants in two thousand nine, and two thousand and ten, and eleven, that was out of sheer necessity, because our department was completely depleted. And, and we did a very, very good job of trying to transition that off, and it took a while to get there. And we finally did that, and we were just focused on using overtime for the, for the safer grant. But it seems like now, this year, we're doing the opposite, so we're coming back to trying to fill or add some additional staffing using grants, which, again, I know it's only five individuals, but I, I think it's still five individuals that, if two hundred is still the target number of where we're trying to reach in terms of the full staff, a complement of the staff of the fire department, I think we need to make sure that it's sustainable within our operating budget. And as we go through these, and we're seeing all these new requests for different departments, I think that the focus should be to make sure that we're not operating our fire or police departments utilizing grants to pay for reoccurring salaries. That's just my personal opinion on that. Just in, in terms of the on-call, who's, who's receiving the on-call stipend on page two eighty? What's, what's that on-call stipend for?
Those are the, the mechanics.
Oh, the mechanics, okay. And then you had mentioned, I had noted, the EMT certification stipend. That's for, I'm sorry, I believe it's the EMT ed stipend, so that one eighteen is for the training of those individuals to get certified?
Which one is that? Now, what page?
Uh, page two eighty.
Yes, that's the yearly stipend.
Negotiated.
Yes.
So is that for a basic paramedic? What is that?
Well, it's for a basic, and also the guys that are certified to paramedics. We do have some firefighters.
So you got multiple?
Yes.
Levels. Okay, so, so the one eighteen, is that for the training for those individuals?
No, that's, that's the pay that, they, they go on their own, and they pay on their own to get.
And then they receive a stipend once they get certified?
Yes, exactly.
If, if you look, Counselor, within the payroll detail, they're listed as to those individuals receiving both of those stipends.
Okay. And there's, there's no issues from, obviously, two different union organizations? You got ASME with EMS, and then obviously, the firefighter union with you folks. There's no, no issues there with both, two different depart, two different unions doing the EMS stuff?
It was a long process, and it was a bumpy road, which you can imagine. But we've made some really major inroads in that area. I'm not gonna say it's all smooth right now, but we're getting very, very close, so.
Okay. Is there, is there a potential to merge into one union versus another, just, or?
I don't see that happening in the near future.
We can leave it there. So just on expenses, electricity went, went up thirty-five thousand?
Again, Counselor, as we indicated in some of the other departments, this has to do with renegotiating the Z schedule and the solo credits, and where they're being applied.
And then the machine shop tools, the, so it just seems like a lot for a toolbox and a set of tools. I know they're obviously heavy duty, but.
Accountability system also, so we can keep track of the tools.
Okay, so it's not just the, the tools in the toolbox? Gas significantly up on, is that regular gas? Is that, I'm just assuming that's just for the buildings?
Yes, natural gas on page two eighty-one, yeah.
Two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two is the trucks.
For all the trucks?
All the trucks and the cars.
That's it? That's all you?
They're very efficient.
I like that.
The new trucks are unbelievable, they really are much better than the old ones. Most of the, the big trucks are diesel, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then my final question for the, for the fire department is the firefighter gear. So I know we put in ninety thousand last year for replacements, so it was a purchase of new gear for the new firefighters, and then some replacement gear. So the ninety thousand, is that getting another thirty sets? Is that what the note says?
Yes.
And then, how much more? I mean, we, we gonna see this on an annual basis, or are we gonna see this every two years, three years?
Probably see it every year.
Every year to?
Yes.
And then the replacement will continue to be that way?
It might, it might slow down a little bit, because what'll happen is, when everybody gets their new gear.
When do you, when do you anticipate to be fully up to where everybody has two sets a year?
I would say maybe like five years.
Five years.
Because what'll happen is, some of the older guys are getting new gear also. So a guy retires in two years from now, he doesn't take that gear with him. He turns it back in, and then we give it to somebody else.
And the gear's just not lasting as long too, now that you've got the gear washes, and you're washing the gears, you get the breakdown and all that good stuff, so. So we can, we can anticipate to see the ninety thousand continuously in the budget for the fire department?
That's my goal, yes, Counselor.
That I yield, it's all my questions for the fire department.
Thank you. Anything further for the fire department? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Lecaney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, just real quick, I want to go back to the toolbox for eighty-seven thousand, seventy-eight thousand dollars. You said you got a system in place to monitor who's taking these tools out. What type of system is that?
Uh, they're looking at different ones. They haven't priced it out yet. We went through Mr. Gallagher, because Mr. Gallagher also has to do it with his personnel. So he's looking at the different types of systems right now, so.
So he hasn't given you a tool?
He hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't narrowed it down. That was a, a guest estimate, basically.
That's a big estimate.
Well, I, I think the tools are pretty close. The tools in the toolbox, they had a good idea in that. It's just about what type of accountability system are you gonna use?
Could I think that's crucial, and I think we should probably implement that in a lot of other areas in the city? So I'm curious as to what time you, you've come up with. I'll look into it. Thank you. That I yield, Chief, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the council? For our police, our, our fire chief? Anything for the EMS as well? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lecaney.
Thank you. Just on the, the revenue, so the primary care reimbursement?
Um, yes, Counselor, there is an individual that's assigned to primary care, and primary care is reimbursing them at, at primary care's request. And this, that one hundred and one includes salaries and benefits.
There's an individual that's assigned to primary care, so what do they, what do they do?
So with the, we have a paramedic assigned to primary care in the walk-in area. So what happens, instead of the, the doctor's offices calling nine-one-one or a private ambulance, now our paramedic is stationed in there with all the equipment. And when there's an emergency in that complex, they just call that dedicated line. He answers, you know, chest pain suite two oh three, he responds, he gets on his radio, calls dispatch, and we send the rescue immediately, and they reimburse us his salary for that service, and we get the transport out.
Okay. And so the chief mentioned PCG reimbursement, what is that?
That's a, a federal program that we've been doing for the past four years. Deputy Fauntz submits it. It's just basically reimbursement from federal Medicaid for a lost revenue. And it's just based on salaries, vehicle depreciation, call volume, and that's the, the formula that we put in, and they just reimburse us for that, for loss of revenue.
And then, just in terms of the user fee, which is the bulk of the revenue, so the ambulance receipts, is that a hundred percent of the ambulance receipts going in, or is that?
The user fees are the ambulance receipts.
So that is what I'm saying, are we using all of it, all the ambulance receipts, so we're anticipating all of it? We're not setting any aside in a reserve account or anything like that, right?
Well, this would be based on cash receipts estimates, as opposed to the billing.
All right.
So the allowance is really net of the allowance.
Okay. So the EMS, so three forty-nine, so the EMS shared safer shows up as a salary, but it's not coming in as a... Oh, so that's the share, that's the portion that they've got to pay, right, so?
Correct.
Okay, makes sense. Let's think of it the other way, I'm sorry. How many per diem salaries? How many people on per diem do we have?
I have a, on paper, I have approximately twelve per diem employees.
Twelve per diem?
But they, you know, they might work one or two shifts a month to fill in, but it's not as prevalent as it used to be.
Okay. And then the, the only other question was, there's a line EMS medical bills, so there's nothing budgeted, but there was sixteen thousand, so sixteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars, three fifty-one? Is that for like pro, what do we have for the billing system, pro EMS or?
I know, we're currently, we, we have Mitch Trent at the moment, but we're switching over to ESO.
ESO.
They'll be starting July first.
Is that what that expense was, or what?
No, I. Medical, medical, what is it, medical supplies?
No, so three fifty-one, it's one, two, three, the fourth line from the bottom, EMS medical bills. So you got, I'm looking at the actual, so it's showing at the end of March, sixteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four.
I can get that for you tomorrow.
Kenny.
Yeah.
All right, I yields.
Thank you. Anything further for EMS? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Lecaney.
I, we're getting close to wrapping up conversations with all our department heads, and I just want to add to comments made earlier to the chief and to the staff that are here today, and your entire department. And really, all the, all the departments and all the public employees that have come before us, gives me a great deal of confidence in, in the hands that, your hands, that you hold our city government in. So I think the people of Fall River should be very proud, as I am very proud of the work that you do in conjunction, as the chief so ably puts every time he speaks, in conjunction with the city administration. In conjunction, as the chief so ably puts every time he speaks, in conjunction with the city administration and the city council and certainly Mike Dion and CDA. And I think it's just tremendous, and I think my colleague in seat six made comment, there were times when, when it was not too easy to, to be here because things were not smooth and operating effectively throughout the city. Some departments were not quite where they should be, but I can truly say that in all the time that I've served, I think we're in better shape now than we've ever been. And that really is kudos to all the department heads and all the staff throughout City Hall and the various public safety departments, so, and the education department as well. So really, kudos to the administration, to our staff and to all of you and to the council that I think has been really a partner in making this work, so. That's all, Mr. President. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further?
Actually, I, I can answer your question, Councilor Kedim. The medical bills?
Yeah.
When we revise the budget, that's a line that we revised. It's actually the workman's comp line for the medical bills for injuries on duty.
Okay.
And we funded that line at fifteen thousand for this current year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're all set.
Thank you.
Fire, EMS, thank you for your work. Great job. So as far as I'm concerned, unless I've missed a tab, I think we've established all of our, our tabs in our budget. We've gone through the entire municipal budget the last three nights. Thank you for all your work. Councilman C. One, did I miss?
Well, we, we still got, well, I, I do have questions on water and sewer, well, sewer.
Okay.
But we, we did have other insurances and other-
Okay, any additional other insurances or other water EMS, the administrations here, all the department heads are gone, so. Councilman C. One, you have the floor.
Uh, so just on, on the sewer, I'm sorry, I, I lost it, just give me one second. We had, the administration had submitted to, to the city council both water and sewer rates. That was heard in council and I think it's, we in final reading for tonight. So at the ordinance committee, I, I specifically asked as to whether or not this was a recommendation by the administration. And I had asked if there was going to be any changes to the CSO charge and, and I was told that, yes, this was the recommendation of the, the administration and I did want to get that on the record. And that there were going to be no changes to the CSO charges that were in the sewer department, which obviously that those CSO charges generate almost close to six million dollars. I'm now hearing that the administration's going to be having a press conference tomorrow, saying that essentially they're going to be eliminating the, or making a recommendation that we eliminate the CSO charge. Is there any truth to that?
Counselor, the mayor has said numerous times that he would like to see the elimination of the stormwater fee, but I'm not aware of an, an announcement to that effect.
Is there a press conference tomorrow with respect to anything financially?
Mr. President, I ca- I'm not, I can't answer that. I don't know if there is or there isn't.
Okay.
Um, so for, for the record, so the, what we have before us, the rates which include the CSO charge are a recommendation of the administration?
Yes, this was the, the budget that was submitted on behalf of the administration as, as presented by water and sewer departments.
Okay. Uh, just, I, I want to be on the, I'll be preemptive then, because I'm hearing that there's a, a press conference tomorrow and I, and I will just state for, for the public that if, if the CSO charge is even considered to be eliminated, the CSO charge is probably one of the more, most fair charge and is saving the sewer users and the water users a significant amount of money. Because it is a, a fixed fee, it's not based on how much water is used or going down the drain. It is a flat fee that is used, so anybody on a fixed income can budget for that. The other piece to this is that the portion of that six point million dollars is, is really on the burden of commercial businesses and properties. So if you were to eliminate that, you can see, we would have to make up six million dollars in, in revenue and that's going to mean that the sewer rate is going to significantly increase, which obviously is all based on a variable usage of water and sewer. So I would just caution everybody, I know it's a nice little political statement, that somebody wants to take out papers and say, this is what we're going to do. I, I, I will say that it's a slippery slope and, and I, I think we're going to go down the wrong, wrong road. And people may think it's a great idea, but when you start getting your water and sewer bills, it's not going to be so great. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Councilor Vice President LaBeau.
Thank you. I'm just going to piggyback on what Counselor in seat one saying in the last hour, I've gotten at least three or four messages stating there's a press conference tomorrow. I don't know that anybody in the council's been made aware of it. I just checked my email, we don't have anything. Either of you, neither of you know about a press conference tomorrow?
I received a text this afternoon from Ms. Andrade indicating that would, there would be an announcement tomorrow at ten-
I'm sorry, from who? Ms. Andrade?
Ms. Andrade.
Who is? Jan Andrade?
Jan.
She's not working.
That's who I received the text from, you're asking me.
And I, I didn't receive the text, Counselor.
Campaign manager is texting the city department heads, letting them know there's a press conference tomorrow?
An, an announcement is what the text said.
An announcement. However, the council hasn't been made known. We're supposed to be voting on this budget tonight in full council and everything that I've gotten has said he's planning on eliminating the CSO charge. And it's, you know, five point nine million dollars in, in revenue under the sewer tab. We had said last night, we didn't think we needed Mr. Sullivan here because we had already talked about it in council. And now unfortunately, he's not here and we're getting this information, so we have no idea what his response would be to this. And I just think it's, um, once again, there's zero communication. If, if the city administrator doesn't know about it, but the CFO gets a text from a campaign manager, it, it's ridiculous.
Counselor, again, and I haven't been notified, so.
No, that's what I said, you don't know about it, but the CFO gets something from-
The only thing I would, I guess I would say to this is, Mrs. Sahadi and I have, along with all the department heads, including Mr. Sullivan, have worked to prepare this budget. We are here hoping that you will approve this budget and the budget does include stormwater fee and the rates as they've been presented and approved. You have to prove those by ordinance and they've all been approved. So I, I can't speak to what may be announced or whatever might be said, but I'm telling you that we're going into this budget expecting that the revenues and expenses will be as they are presented here this evening, presuming that you approve the budget and this is the budget that we will operate from during the fiscal year coming.
It's just, um, I don't even know what the word is. It's disrespectful to the council and the city administrator if you don't know anything about it. We, we're working on something in front of us for, you've been preparing on, for months now. And the day after we possibly vote on a budget, there's a press conference that only select people know about it, from a campaign manager saying that he's going to get rid of a CSO fee. We have no idea how he plans to do that, except that he's found a way. And, and here it is, campaign season again. I, I would bet that that's followed by a, a walk up to the sixth floor to pull papers. It's just campaign nonsense. It's not fair. It's disrespectful and I yield. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Councilor Kilby.
It's mind boggling if it's true. You know, I respect you, Kathy and Mary, all the work that you've put in. You, you give us honest answers and I know you do, but if that's the case, that's just plain wrong. That's just plain wrong. All the deliberation that we've had in committee, in the ordinance committee, deliberation over the last number of nights, last night was till eleven o'clock at night. No communication from, like Pam LaBeau said, from the sixth floor at all. And then an announcement from a private citizen that the CSO fee, which obviously is cleaning up the Taunton River. It's, it's been in place for political purposes. It's just, this, this, this is like to new heights if, if it is true. I hope it's not, but I wouldn't be surprised. So no blame on, on, on you guys, but just typical. It's, it's arrogant, it's mind boggling, and it's childish. So I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat five, six, Councilor Long.
Yeah, my phone's been blowing up too and all I say is, is, you know, I, I don't even engage in this, I don't even take it under, it's, it is what it is. We have this before us, we've done our due diligence, we've done our work. This has been proposed by the administration, it's their budget. Here it is. I'm ready to vote on it, I'm ready to support it. We've got, we've done everything we've had to do. Whatever they want to do, be my guest, but this is the budget I'm supporting. This is the budget I'm going forward with and I can support this budget. I'm happy. Let's go. Let's get this done with and let's not even, give that even an ounce of thought or even a second of any more conversation, it's not worth it. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Councilor Kamaire.
Yeah, I also don't live in Gossipville. I stay out of the gossip as much as possible and rumors. I haven't received any phone calls, texts, emails, emails or anything about the press conference tomorrow. But that being said aside, Mr. Sahadi, throughout the year, has he asked you or Kathy, has he asked you if it's a possibility where the revenues would come from if he were to eliminate the CSO? Have you guys been looking at any projections, any of the departments?
Counselor, I have, I have not had any conversations with regard to replacing five point nine million dollars within the sewer department.
Because I think i- if he could come up with magic money, and I don't know, maybe he hit that three hundred and sixty-five million dollar lottery and he's going to just pay it yourself, that's, that'd be one thing. But other than that, I mean, I know the previous administration years ago on the Flanagan made a pledge to get rid of the stormwater fee and the council had to vote on that. So we are still in charge of voting on whether or not the stormwater fee stays or goes.
Absolutely.
As far as I'm concerned.
That's correct, Counselor.
So when that came down from Mayor Flanagan, I guess there were councils, for people who don't remember the past, that had pledged that they would go along and support that vote. But when people saw who was going to pay that bill and how the sewer rates and the water rates nearly quadrupled or tripled, they said, well, you know, I'd rather pay the thirty-five dollars than pay the water rate and sewer rate. But if he can lower the water rate, lower the sewer rate and eliminate the stormwater fee, hey, let's have that conversation. Let's, let's, let's talk about it. If he wants to come up with a scheme or some way to get rid of taxes, let's have that conversation. Let's talk about it. Anything we can do to stop people from paying more money so we can have more benefits and provide the services and the protection that people deserve, let's have that conversation. But let's not go down a road of making campaign promises and pledges without the details and the facts to back them up that those ideas are truly in the best interest of the residents of this community, that will give them the services they deserve, that will provide the safety they deserve, that will educate the children and the men they need to be educated on. Let's have those conversations. Other than that, I'm not willing to live in Gossipville and if that's what he's going to be projecting, then let's wait and see what he does that he does. Let's see what he, what he offers or what he's going to present to his council. But as my colleague has stated, what we're going to take care of tonight, or if not tonight, on Monday when it's scheduled, is what's before us, what we've talked about, we've all agreed about, what we think is doable for this community. The budget's balanced, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what we're looking at. Anything other than that, Gossipville, Rumerville, I don't want to participate in tonight or tomorrow or any day after. But if you have a way or anyone else has a way, if any councils or anybody can save the taxpayers' money, provide the same level of services or better services, better protection and better educate our children, I'm all for it. Let's have those conversations. Until then, I won't be supporting something that's going to get someone elected, but yet do damage to the taxpayer's sense because we've seen too much of that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for a point of information, I did send the mayor a text and I asked the mayor if he is eliminating the stormwater fee at a press conference tomorrow. He's indicated to me that's news to him. He has no anticipation to do that, so. I just wanted everybody to know that, to put everybody's mind at ease. Mayor did communicate that with me via text just a moment ago.
All right.
Anything further?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. One, Councilor Kedim.
Thank you. Well, personally, I don't believe anything he says anyway, so I'll wait for tomorrow. I'm sure there'll be a press conference, but I, I just wanted to get on the record because I did ask this and I want it on the record again on the, on the floor of the finance committee. I asked the administration before, as, as Counselor in seat two alluded to, if there was any discussion whatsoever with the administration. Both, both individuals at the table told me no. Terry Sullivan was there, told me no. So I want it on the record again because, and I, and I even brought it up and said that it was mentioned at the debate during the recall that that's what was going to be done. And I want to see before we even approved anything, how that was going. And just to give everybody a perspective as to how much we're really talking about, Terry Sullivan, I asked how much one penny in, a penny increase in the rate would generate. And, and I think it was, and I forget, one was water, one was sewer, so I'm going to throw out twenty thousand, it might be twenty-five or fifteen thousand, but it was around twenty thousand. So every penny increase in the rate was twenty thousand. So you do the math. So in order to get six million dollars, that's, that's a lot of pennies that you're going to have to add to the, to the water bill, so with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further with, with respect to the budget? Councilman C. Three, Councilor Kamaire.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, I appreciate, I think, I think it's the word of the day, Rumerville or?
Customville.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I don't know why this was brought up.
I don't.
If, if, if any elected official is having a press conference and they're doing it as separate from a government press conference, we get, we get, we get emails all the time from the, uh, the mayor's office or the Monica Sosa, if there's a city government press conference about some, something relating to city government. I have not gotten any emails, I have not gotten any phone calls, I have not been told that there's a press conference tomorrow, except I think I may have heard something on the radio when I was driving in on the talk show. But, you know, so be it. Whatever, whatever people are doing in, on their own private time as, as possible candidates for public office. I don't know, I, I don't hear from other candidates that are having press conferences or doing press events. So that's, that's something that's separate from what we're doing here. We've just, and I, and I commended all of us just a few minutes ago for the diligence, the due diligence we've done on this budget. This is, this is the business of the council. This is the business of the administration. And for us to have been derailed, I'm not insulted that I'm not included in the circle of whatever is going to be happening tomorrow, assuming that something is going to be happening tomorrow. I happen to be someone who appreciates when the reductions are made for us and for taxpayers and for rent payers. So I was very pleased when we eliminated the per unit fee and I was very pleased when we eliminated the purple bags. And I think we're one of the few communities that's had that kind of relief for our taxpayers and rent payers. And if there's opportunity for there to be greater relief to our rent payers and taxpayers, then I'll applaud that as well if it's sound business practice, sound government practice. But I'm not here to speculate or, or to wrap myself around building a, like, a, a scenario of something that is totally speculative. So I say, I'm, I'm ready to vote on this today too. Do we have that option, Mr. President?
We sure do. It's going to be in our full council agenda, yes.
We all just to council to vote on it?
It's already in full council, so we don't need to refer.
So I think, you know, if we can, if we can act on this budget tonight, that saves us from having to come back on Monday.
That is correct.
So I'm all for that. And that is the business of what we are about. All this other speculative Rumerville nonsense is something for outside of this chamber.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman C. One, Councilor Kedim.
You know, Councilor C. Three is an intelligent individual, but sometimes he boggles my mind how certain things are not within the purview of the city council, how certain things are not within our jurisdiction. It's absolutely asinine, okay? We've got a budget before us, we've got the rates before us that would be proposed. And I think if there is a press conference tomorrow to suggest that anything else or an elimination of a fee that we're about to approve in a budget we're about to approve, to not ask questions and saying it's outside our, our purview or being derailed is just absolutely asinine. So I understand when people don't want to talk about it, that's fine. Just say you don't want to talk about it, but don't say it's not within the purview of the city council because this is absolutely in the purview of the city council, okay? Can I go on to the indirects?
Sure, Captain.
Just on page three thirty for the, for the health insurance. There. So we've got a, obviously a reduction and I'm, I'm assuming that's obviously based on, on the trends that we had with the school departments and, and the actuals that came in and the, and the claims that we've seen from, which GBS is a new name now? Gallagher, Gallagher, whatever they're, I don't want to mispronounce their. So I'm assuming that this is based on obviously some new numbers that they've submitted to you and, and recommendations on, on rates. Is that correct?
Um, that is correct. It, it also includes the, um, projection on the rebates on the prescription program, so that's almost a million dollars.
So my, my only question is, is that we have the school department before us and, and in their budget. And obviously, it all depends on what they get for funding, because I, I think we heard that if they don't get the one oh one that they were looking for based on the governor's numbers, there could be some cuts and some of that could be the positions, but they're looking to add seventy new positions. So my question to you is, is that, are we including some addition, the potential of having, because seventy new positions is significant and- having, because 70 new positions is significant and the school department tends to hire younger individuals when they add positions, which means that they're, for the most part, are either single or really don't have an option to get healthcare somewhere else. There's a real likelihood that we might have 70 individuals that are now coming onto the healthcare system, so.
So Mr. Almeida took that into consideration together with the projections from Gallagher. In addition, based on what you just indicated, which is 100% true, the flip to that, based on the consultances, they're the ones that don't use the health insurance as well. You know, they may go for their, you know, annual visits, but they're the healthy employees.
In terms of the claims, right, yes. But I'm just looking at for the number of employees that are coming in in the 75, 25 split.
They're not anticipating the claims to go up
Okay.
as much as you would think with 75 new employees.
Okay. And then just on the next page, 331, the property insurance, that was a significant increase, is there?
Yeah.
Parking garages?
No, actually, it was the flood at Durfee.
Oh, really?
Yes. Now, we are going to go out for bid this year again, so, you know, we may be able to secure a little bit better pricing on that, but the majority of this increase, and you'll see that you'll have a transfer in July
Yep.
because we're over as a result of that flood.
Okay. Then the last question I had was just the reserve account and again, I think this budget is pretty lean, right? So there's no built-in reserve for the budget. I know we had, and we didn't necessarily have it last year either, but we threw the additional revenue for the pay-to-throw program in there.
Agreed.
Is, do you not feel a need to at least throw maybe a couple of hundred thousand dollars into this account just for unanticipated items?
Certainly if there, when we put together the budget, you know, we really do look at the needs of each of the departments, even though you've had a couple of departments here that seem to indicate they would want a little bit more in their budget, but we do sit down with each one of them at the end of the day in terms of balancing the revenue and not being overly aggressive on the revenue side. There really wasn't additional monies available to put into this reserve account. As the fall progresses, before the recap, if we find that the revenue is coming in significantly over, we can certainly come to this council and ask for an appropriation into this reserve account from municipal receipts.
Okay. With that, I yields.
Thank you. Anything further on any other aspects of the municipal budget when it comes to other insurances, EMS, I'm sorry, so water, sewer, capital improvement, anything else? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Yeah, you know, it bothers me that we've got a budget, we're ready to vote on it and there's a surprise coming tomorrow. What is the surprise? The rainwater? What is it? Well, it could be that maybe he's not going to run, could be that as well. That'd be a surprise. But are we on the spot? If he comes in tomorrow and he has his press conference, he says he's going to knock off the rainwater tax, do we have to vote on this thing or you just can eliminate it?
So Counselor, the rates, as your colleagues have said, are set by ordinance and you've approved those rates. The obligation to pay the CSO expenses, including the debt service, is an obligation that must be met. As Mrs. Sahadi said, and I would concur with her, we are not aware of an additional $6 million anywhere that could be utilized to offset that revenue generated by the stormwater fee, obviously within this budget. So we've given you a budget that is based on the expenses that must be paid. You've approved rates for water and sewer and stormwater, based on, you know, what's needed to fund those departments. And this budget is anticipated to, again, map out the expenses and the revenues that are anticipated for the current, upcoming fiscal year.
All right. He eliminates the stormwater fee. What happens then? Where's the $6 million? Does it fall on us?
First of all, Counselor, the stormwater fee is an ordinance.
Yeah.
So the council needs to vote to eliminate the ordinance for the stormwater fee.
So if we don't, we look bad.
Well, again, Counselor, but if you were, and again, this is all news to me as well, so, but if you were, that money would have to be found. That expense has to be paid. So there would have to be an alternate revenue source, and again, Mrs. Sahadi and I are not aware of $6 million sitting somewhere that could come in and offset that fee structure. But again, the ordinances are set by you, they're approved by you and they are consequently valid and those fees will be issued in accordance with local ordinance.
I think it's a political ploy, if it is tomorrow, to get elected. And I guess he'll do anything. And I think it's awful if that goes down just to this.
Again, it's all speculation, Counselor, so.
Speculation, well, speculation.
Rumamill, as your colleagues said.
We have to wait till tomorrow.
Correct.
But we vote the budget tonight.
Correct.
You know, I mean, you know, the day after, we may vote it tonight and then we've got to listen to him tomorrow, see what he's got to say. Then it puts everybody in a spot. So it's a bad situation. I don't like it. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
All right, just to say this, I'm the chair of the ordinance committee and I can promise each councilor sitting here tonight, as chair of the ordinance committee, if this does come up, I will deal with it as the chair of the ordinance committee, I will deal with it in a very responsible way. So just relax, take it easy. You can't just do it by executive order, it has to go through ordinance and we'll deal with that if that comes up before the ordinance committee and I promise you, it won't.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Plain and simple, I'm as relaxed as I've ever been, no big deal. Let's just keep going with the meeting and avoid the nonsense. I'm all for it. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kelly.
I don't want to give this any more legs, but I will make a prediction. There'll be a press conference tomorrow, probably going to be part of his platform to, you know, reelection platform. It's going to be a promise he's going to try to make and that's unfulfillable. I, I'm not alarmed, I'm not worried and I don't think, I know Mary's very good at what she does, but I don't think you can finagle that one, so. All right, I yield, so let's proceed, please.
Thank you. Next order of business is the discussion with the intermunicipal agreement.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Sahadi, I didn't see that.
No, no problem. So in front of you this evening, just in case everyone hasn't had a chance to, look at the revised appropriation order, we took back what your recommendation was last evening and so the facilities, salaries have been decreased over the original order that you had in front of you by the $84,000. We increased the community maintenance salaries by 1,600. That was for the two individuals for the $800 each of uniform allowances that had been inadvertently missed in the budget itself and the remaining $83,000 went to community maintenance expense, which will be allocated to the tree division.
I just want to make sure that prior to the council having our full council agenda, I want all councilors to make themselves aware of the amended appropriation order. If the councilors do not have this on their desks, please let the clerk know and we will make sure that we get you copies. This will be the appropriation order that when we go into full council, that we will be appropriating. We have the opportunity when that comes before us as a reminder that we can approve, reject or approve, reduce, reject or approve. Those are our only options.
Mr. President, for clarification, is Counselor Kadim's motion to transfer the safety officer money towards trees, is that correct?
That's, as Mrs. Sahadi.
Yes, thank you.
That's the amended appropriation order that everybody should have, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I want to make sure all councilors have this so that there's no confusion. Okay? Anything further regarding the municipal budget? For questions, comments, concerns? Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Just one thing, I got a call this week and I think you did too, Mr. President, about the elections and I guess they had somebody part-time, $10,000 and seeing that Mrs. Kelly is sick, is there a possibility that they could have a part-time there that was there or?
The former chair of elections has agreed to come back and give us some time in the event that there's a need to provide some additional supervision within the department. So you're familiar with our former
Yeah.
Chair of elections.
He's not working for nothing, is he?
No, no, that's the money that's incorporated for the $10,000.
So it should be all set.
Yes.
The concern that he has, that part-time 19 hours should be redone again because she's not feeling well and they could use the help.
Yeah.
It's going to be addressed.
Absolutely, Counselor.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda this evening is a discussion regarding the intermunicipal agreement between the City of Fall River, the redevelopment authority, between Fall River's redevelopment authority and the City of Fall River. This is also in our agenda, item two under priority matters in full council, for action at that point, if necessary. We have the discussion. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So in accordance with chapter 121B, section seven, Massachusetts general law, there is a provision that redevelopment authorities, if they're so duly authorized within a city or town, shall make use of the services of the agency, officers and employees of the city or town in which such authority is organized and such city or town shall, if requested, make available such services. So Mass. general law provides for us to assist local redevelopment authority with services that they may need in the execution of their economic responsibilities. To take it one step further, Massachusetts general law, chapter 40, section 4A, was researched and Mrs. Sahadi had advised and we concur that an intermunicipal agreement is the best vehicle to allow us to provide for an opportunity to extend payroll services, employee benefits and other services within municipal government to the redevelopment authority. The municipal, intermunicipal agreement that you have here does provide that all expenses for payroll and any health insurance costs or any related personnel costs would all be reimbursed from the redevelopment authority. So the intermunicipal agreement is not causing any financial obligation to the city, other than the in-kind services they may get from some of our municipal department people in the execution of their duties. And did you want to add anything further on?
No, I think Mrs. Verres covered it. This is, we have two different agencies here, they're established into two different sections of Mass. general law and in order to really provide services to each other, the redevelopment authority will certainly be providing the city with economic development activities as well as the city providing activities to the redevelopment authority in the way of processing the payroll, providing health insurance benefits that will be reimbursed, communication services, you know, the internet, et cetera, that this agreement is really necessary between the two different agencies.
And there'll be this establishment of an agency fund, I believe it's called, and the funds will be deposited from the redevelopment authority into this account and the city will pay for any associated expenses, again, those personnel costs from the funds within that agency, agency fund. So, and additionally, there is a provision, like we do with Community Development Agency and BCTC, the RDA office will be paying rent to the City of Fall River for the space that they're using there. So we are recovering expenses that you might otherwise expect to receive from a municipal agency, again, but for the in-kind services that are provided.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Just full transparency, I have the opportunity to fully review this, given the fact that we're doing the budget, so, but I am, I'm personally going to need some additional time, but I do got a question in terms of the, this individual, is this individual going to be considered a city employee or an employee with the redevelopment authority?
She is an employee of the redevelopment authority.
So we're providing all the payroll, they're going to be getting paid through, through op payroll? The benefits, the retirement system's going to come through as if they were, she was a city?
The retirement is unique in that sense that it was voted years and years ago when they previously had an employee to be a separate agency within the Fall River retirement system. That will continue, but similar to the retirement employees now, their payroll is processed with the city and reimbursed as well as their healthcare.
So what happens in the event, I'm saying that it's going to happen, what happens in the event that the redevelopment authority runs out of money and is no longer able to support the salary of this individual and that person is either, are we going to take on that responsibility for the salaries? Who's responsible for unemployment?
It is not our intention. We would be looking for payment in advance of processing the payroll as well as the health insurance in advance of the month. So it's an agency fund, so that we would not be advancing redevelopment authority any monies. If it got to the point that redevelopment authority was unable to meet their liabilities, that would be up to the redevelopment board to make those decisions. And as far as workman's comp goes, she would not be covered under our workman's comp.
So, and whereas states that the state should provide administrative support services to the Fall River redevelopment authority to facilitate economic development activities, what exactly does that entail?
There is a, sorry, Counselor, there is a full job description that I could, I mean, talk to you about in terms of the functions that she's going to be providing, but I would also add that the redevelopment authority itself also facilitates other projects, other than, you know, straight economic development services. It specifically referenced infrastructure. The city pier is an example, that was an infrastructure improvement that was done. The development and sale of lots in the Life Sciences Park, that's really an infrastructure activity that they engaged in to facilitate job creation within the community. So they're actually doing things beyond simply providing the economic development services that are being provided by the Economic Development Director. And as I said, Massachusetts general law does provide, you know, that we should support them with additional services. So they would be able to work with the, you know, the planning director for advice. He recently assisted them with some site review for one of the parcels in the Life Sciences Park and things of that nature.
But in terms of what other services would we be providing? What other administrative support services? I mean, that's vague.
So they have their own attorney, so there would be no legal services to be provided. Again, I mentioned planning.
Engineering.
Engineering services, things, infrastructure things, I could see them utilizing those services as available.
For instance, just legal, like where does, where do I get that guarantee that we won't be providing legal services? Because I mean, somebody can make an argument that's other administrative support services, right? We've got in-house legal, that's a service that we could be providing, I mean. And then the amount of time associated with some of these economic development projects are pretty significant. I mean, does that then force us to start looking for additional attorneys? I just need to know, I need to know more about what administrative support services, because quite frankly, when we start doing all these agreements, it's the devil's little details that really tend to kill you at the, you know, because right now, we're in a good position, right? We're in a honeymoon, so when the honeymoon's over and then we go back to this and say, well, this was not what we agreed to, but this is what we agreed to, and then we've got people interpreting things and, yeah, it's, and because administrative support services is vague, it really is. So I, for one, just need to know exactly what that entails, what it does not include. So I'm going to need more time, Mr. President.
Mrs. Verres, could you indicate maybe to the council the urgency behind this, if there is any?
Well, we felt, because we wanted to be able to include the employee in the city's munis system for payroll and tax calculations and that, that it was better to approve the agreement early on, because otherwise, there's going to be two sets of payroll data that would have to be ultimately reconciled if they were to do their own internal, you know, payroll through writing a check. So it was felt that more specifically for the personnel services, that it would be more beneficial to start her off more beneficial to start her off in, you know, those, those city-provided services. It would make it a lot cleaner, and so that would be helpful. Additionally, I mean, she is in the space now. They will be paying rent for that space that will be, will be billed. But again, we're continuing to provide the support services. There are actually services that we have been providing based on 121B even since they took on this role with economic development. I've been providing support services, again, planning, engineering have been assisting. So we felt the sooner we got the agreement memorialized, if you will, or approved, that it would just facilitate the exchange. But it was predominantly, Mr. President, the issue of the payroll services, and we wanted to start clean with putting that within our city's municipal payroll system.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
No, it was recommended by their counsel, John Coughlin, yes, that the city would need to approve the agreement first, and then, and then it would go to them for approval, yes. They already had a, you may recall initially, Community Development Agency was providing those services because of the, the funding there, and so there was an agreement between the Community Development Agency and the Redevelopment Authority for these kinds of services. But when, but that was before there was any payroll. So the payroll was really the, the deciding factor when, again, when Mrs. Sahadi looked at it, she felt that, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing for us to provide in-kind services that don't require any exchange of cost, but when it comes to payroll, that it really needed to be set up in accordance with Section Forty.
Oh, yeah, Forty, Forty-four.
Yes, yes, they'll be paying in advance and go into a fund, and we'll draw from that fund to pay for those expenses.
I understand my colleague and she wants concerns, and it's true the devil is in the details, but I think in something like this, it's pretty much we're gonna follow SUEs, what was happening prior with the prior Redevelopment Authority agreement with OED, except for the payroll aspect of it, which now we'll be getting in advance. And it's hard to be specific on exactly what services will be provided, which we won't be provided. I think the board is a level-headed board, but he's right, when they run out of money, what do we do then? Is it something, but it's a matter of what would, did we do when they'd had no money years ago? And we gave them assets, and we transferred assets, and they came across some money, and they owed money, and so you're never gonna get to the point where...
Well, and additionally, Counsel, there is a provision in the agreement for thirty-day termination with notice. So if the city started to feel-
If we're like to resume, we can terminate it within three days.
Yes, yes. So if the city started to feel that maybe there was some financial issues, or there was a breakdown, and, you know, the services-
And if there's unreasonable requests and services provided by the city, we can turn those down as well. We don't have to say who's to say.
We don't have to do them.
That's correct, certainly. That's certainly.
And we can turn that down, it's unreasonable. They're in the SUEs, it's, it's, it's just not gonna happen.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with that agreement and the, and the theory behind the agreement, and I'm glad that you're looking for money in advance of making payments for salaries, which is a good thing. I don't think that was in, it's new and it's, it's good to be, do it that way, because you wanna have the money in advance, in case they do run out of money.
Correct.
Well, to me, it's pretty much, we're one in the same for the most part, and they can prove to that community, and if they need some services, we have an agreement for that, we can help them out, as we've done in the past. It's not much difference. With that, Aye, yeh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. Just so I understand our role, you need a vote of the council for the implementation or the, the, the interagency agreement?
Yes, yes, Counsel.
And, and that item is on the agenda tonight's meeting?
Yes, again, we were, we were hoping to implement so that we could, you know, start her off in, in the city's payroll right from the beginning.
Right. And I, I had read somewhere that her, she starts in this position July first, is that the official?
Actually, no, actually, she, she started June tenth, so sure, her payroll is, is coming due.
All right, so she, okay, so July first was not a date when?
No, that was a date, that was the outside date that they had looked at, but there hadn't been a firm date established until she was able to check with her former employer and make arrangement, and it, as it turns out, she was able to start June tenth. She actually spent her first two days attending a wind energy conference in Boston on behalf of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority.
Good. And also, I, I see that the, the address is Room Six Zero One. Where, where is Six Zero One?
It's right next door to the MIS Department.
Okay. So it's not the old Froed office space?
No, no, Counselor, no.
Now, I understand that other agencies of the city, or particularly the Community Development Agency, is in process of moving up to the sixth floor or two?
Yes, Counsel. Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be moving up, and then there's some other offices that are being adjusted, just to make the, the flow more customer-friendly.
Right. Well, it's, it seems to me too, in, in just, in reviewing this, this is just to protect our interests, as well as the RDA's interest, or the FRRA's interest. So I hope that we could adopt this tonight and, and just have a smooth transition.
Right.
We're beginning a new fiscal year, we're beginning a new relationship. I think we ought to get on track, and I think, you know, it's, it's rather a simple agreement. I see nothing that would prohibit our voting for this tonight. Aye, yeh.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Lekadeen.
Just to, the question that my Counselor in seat, my colleague in seat two asked with regards to whether or not the, the board had reviewed this, wouldn't it be more prudent for us to approve a document once it was, has been reviewed by the Redevelopment Authority in advance? I mean, this is the, we, we get, it's not like we get to negotiate and make changes. Once we take this vote, this is the document that's been voted in, so we don't get a second bite at the apple. So I don't know that it makes sense for us to approve an agreement that we don't know that the Redevelopment Authority, number one, agrees to. There might be changes, and, you know, we don't know that, so we're-
Well, again-
I think it, I think it's a little, yeah, I mean, we, we should be getting a document that has been vetted by the Redevelopment Authority, they're comfortable with it, the administration's comfortable with it, that it's ready to be executed. We should be the last ones to execute it.
Well, Attorney, Attorney Coughlin had actually, we had had a conversation, and again, Mrs. Sahadi weighed in on that as well, and Attorney Coughlin was of the impression that the intermunicipal agreement wasn't necessary, as he was seeing it, but he did say that if the city felt it was necessary, that he would defer to the city's decision. And so it was his recommendation, again, to get the city's consent and the city's support for the agreement before it went to the Redevelopment Authority, because ultimately it is the city that's providing these services specifically. The Redevelopment Authority is providing services, as they always have, but the, the change, if you will, in, in responsibility and service delivery is really on the city's side, not on the redevelopment authority's side. So it was his recommendation that we get the city council's approval first, and then the redevelopment authority would be approving it afterward.
Is it possible to get a copy of the contract of the individual that is getting here? I just wanna make sure that there's nothing else in, in the contract that we might be missing in this agreement?
There, it had been requested, I think Council President may have asked us for that. I was gonna try to get that for you, but the contract has not been signed by the redevelopment authority individual. It's been negotiated, and it's, it's ready to go, but I wasn't comfortable sharing that with you until I actually had that, that signature on the document, and there's been some personal delays in that that have prohibited that.
Thank you, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Long.
Has the Corporation-
Your microphone, please.
Has Corporation Counsel reviewed this document?
He has not, Counselor. It's, it's a standard intermunicipal, we did get-
I'd like to ask you that, too.
Well, we-
We've had these before, correct?
We, we have, we have, and we did have Attorney Thomas, yes, review, review the agreement.
Well, and I just, I just, you know, again, I can understand the concern of my fellow counselors, but, you know, I do a quick, quick overview of this. We have an indemnification agreement in here that says the FRRA shall hold the city harmless from all claims related to employment, benefits, collective bargaining, all that type of stuff. All its officials, its offices, talking about the city holding us harmless. It's a term of one year, and the whole-
Well, it's actually, it's, it's a three-year contract, Counselor.
On an annual basis.
It renews, yes, but, and then again, you do have the termination clause.
Correct, and I'm, I'm just going through the inter-
Right.
Okay, then we have a termination clause within thirty days.
Yes.
You've got the severability in there, you've got the waivers in there, and then we have, also, we have financial safeguards at the end, which it says will maintain accurate, comprehensive, blah, 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 that type of stuff, but you get to the end of this and it says, let me just go back here for a minute, it was, okay, that the FRRA for accounting consistent reliability, the city shall establish an agency fund to pay the salary, employment benefits, and other costs of the economic development director of the FRRA, and the FRRA shall fund said agency fund on a monthly basis as requested by the city. The city shall be under no obligation to pay payroll, employment benefits, or other related costs for the economic development director of the FRRA unless said agency fund has been fully funded as requested by the city. The FRRA shall cause an audit to be completed, books directed by December first, annually by an independent audit firm, and should provide a copy of said audit to the city. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with this agreement, but I'm not sure about the other agreements that are in place. My understanding is, is there's money available through the Community Development Agency, and it's two years of funding, it's about five hundred thousand, I believe, is that correct?
I'm not sure how much he's rolling over, but it's, it's close to that, Counselor, yeah.
So you got, they got five hundred thousand dollars of startup money for this, you know, I'd be concerned about the employment agreement, I'd want that in place. I'm, are you concerned about the agreement with CDA, if that's in place, and whether this is in compliance with that? So I do understand the, the, the time constraints on this. I'm pretty sure it's in place, because the funding from CDA is pretty restrictive, and the regulations that go with that, and I believe that would supersede anything, whatever, whatever they say, doesn't matter, 'cause you can't just throw those out. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it, and I'm willing to support this tonight. I wish there was some more backup to it, but again, here we are at the last hour saying, hey, we need this, and, you know, moving forward, I'm, I'm really getting a little tired with the, okay, can we get this done today type of thing? You know, we've been working on this for a while, and we should've had those other documents, so, but I'm comfortable with the language in here, I'm comfortable with the, and familiar with the community development documentation, so I'm willing, I'm willing to support it, so. Aye, yeh.
Thank you. Anything further? Very none, thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, Mr. President?
Counselor in seat four, Counselor-
I think it would be remiss if we didn't, you know, thank Ms. Verres and Ms. Sahadi for putting together this very professional, well-documented budget. Obviously, it took a lot of hard work, and it's not, oftentimes, it's not easy advocating for the administration, and the checks and balances here, and a part of the city council sometimes don't agree with that. So, but thank you for your professionalism, thanks, thanks for your straight answers, and kudos to the department heads who also conduct themselves very professionally, so. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you. Motion, motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Two-minute break, real two minutes. The Fall River City Council meeting will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselors Lekadeen?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Alabie LaBeau?
Long?
Yep.
Pelletier?
Still here.
Verres?
Yeah.
President Pontius?
Here. Everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and or deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the first item before you is the Communication-
whether perceived or unperceived by those present and or deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, the first item before you is the communication from the mayor and the proposed appropriation order for the F Y 2020 municipal budget.
We have the option to approve, reduce, or reject. Uh, we don't, motion? Motion to adopt the, um, annual budget for fiscal 2020 for various-
Amended appropriation, amended.
That is correct, the amended appropriation order. Okay. Be it ordered that the annual budget for fiscal 2020 for various funds, 296-691-415, of which the amount 289-596-091 be raised through taxation for the appropriation as follows. Motion has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do just want to echo my, the sentiments of my colleague in seats, uh, four. Um, I do want to take the opportunity to thank both, uh, City Administrator Viveras and then Mary Sahadi as well for putting the budget together. I know, um, how much time and effort goes into, uh, putting the budget together, and, and how challenging it can be to try to balance all of the, um, needs and, and wish lists that come before you, uh, so, and then the process starts really, really early, and it, and it becomes even more challenging when it takes a while to get the, uh, the numbers from the state, and given the fact that, uh, we are so reliant on state aid, uh, that, that becomes even more challenging. Um, I, I do want to say that I, I won't be supporting the budget, uh, for a couple of reasons, and, and it's not because, um, of any one particular, uh, reason, it's just unfortunately, um, I think when we start to look at the page you throw on the, uh, 2.3 million dollars that was eliminated, uh, in the way of the purple bags, I think it really is creating, uh, some unsustainability with our future, uh, revenue numbers and the forecasts, uh, and, and we talked a little bit about that yesterday in terms of what we will be generating, uh, in surplus and, and way of free cash, and being able to, uh, really kind of reallocate some of those monies to the much-needed, uh, stabilization accounts, the O P E V, uh, trust, uh, trust funds, um, things of that nature. And when you look at the, uh, community maintenance, the, uh, rec, uh, the disposal for, uh, the trash, uh, increased by 800,000 dollars alone, uh, which has a line item of 2 million dollars, the recycling was up 180,000, um, that line item is 842,000 dollars. And then the collection, which is a little tough because the, uh, initial budgeted amount was off, so I'll just say that's up roughly 200,000 based on some, um, rough estimates on the actuals, so that line item is 4.6 million dollars. So the cost to do trash, uh, to, to pick up the trash, to, uh, service all of our residents in town and dispose of that with the waste and the recycling is 7.4 million dollars. We were generating 2.3 million dollars to try to offset some of that. Um, so by losing that, that revenue, um, we lost the ability to continue to have that revenue going forward. And these costs are just going to increase year over year over year. The question that I had asked was whether or not, uh, we, we seen in the future, if, if we anticipated any new, uh, revenue numbers coming in outside of the, the marijuana numbers. Um, as recreational marijuana stands, we, we don't know what the competitive market is going to do, uh, and how that's going to drive the revenue numbers that we receive, um, both from an impact fee and then the, the excise tax, so that's concerning. The second piece is the, uh, you know, we, we get to the fact of the schools, the schools are requesting 101% of the budget numbers. Uh, we're at 100%, so I know there's probably going to be some, some additional monies coming in, we just don't know what that means. Uh, I've got to rely on the school committee, who does their due diligence to look at that budget, uh, to see what the needs are for the, uh, students of our, our community, um, and they approved the budget of 101, uh, that was being proposed by the superintendent. If we continue to stay at the 100%, uh, so we'll see all those new initiatives being reduced, the 70 positions, the para positions, things of that nature, so that's a little concerning for myself. Uh, another concerning issue, and, and I know this is a minor issue, um, is the layoff that we potentially see in the purchasing department. We have a request to, to add an assistant purchasing agent, uh, but we have a clerical person who is, uh, currently working there, uh, who will be laid off, uh, at the end of June 30th, um, with no real guarantee that there is a position for her moving forward. I think it's an unfortunate situation, I think we should have tried to work something out with that. Um, and then we get to the point where we get, uh, our police and fire staffing levels, and we're utilizing grants to, uh, staff for our police and fires, which in my mind creates a structural, uh, deficit, and the compound effect to try to catch up with that revenue year over year, uh, can be challenging, and I don't want to be an individual who's going to be, uh, faced with having to lay some individuals off if, if that need arises. So for those reasons, I, I will not be supporting it, but again, I don't want anybody to interpret it as, um, I didn't appreciate the work and the effort that was put forth, uh, I just do have some concerns with that. With that, I yield.
Thank you, anything further from the council on the motion? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just a question on logistics, uh, will we be voting for the, uh, funds, um, separate from like the water and sewer?
Yes.
Funds separately, okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did I read the appropriation order correctly into the record? If not, if you could reintroduce it.
Yes, Mr. President, that the, excuse me, that the annual budget for the fiscal year 2020 from various funds is 296,000,691,415, of which the amount of 289,596,091 be raised through taxation for appropriation.
There's a motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, hearing any further discussion before this council, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the budget appropriation order, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Have the EMS enterprise fund, the amounting to 8,233,000 dollars.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion on this. Hearing none, all those in, uh, roll call.
On adoption of the enterprise fund for EMS, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
The enterprise fund for water in the amount of 13,367,975 dollars.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the enterprise fund, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the order, um, which authorizes the mayor to enter into such agreement, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the order, um, which authorizes the mayor to enter into such agreement, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the order, um, which authorizes the mayor to enter into such agreement, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the enterprise fund, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the order, um, which authorizes the mayor to enter into such agreement, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Counselor in seat one, objected. Any, hearing any further objections before this council? Hearing none. It's the first time the item's been-
Point of order? The, uh, the, I, I think the objection needs to be registered prior to the vote being taken, according to the charter. It can't be done at, at the end of a vote, it has to be done prior to the vote being called, or at the time a name is called to vote.
I'm going to take a brief recess. Thank you, anything further from the council on the motion? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just a question on the logistics, uh, will we be voting for the, uh, funds, um, separate from like the water and sewer?
Yes.
Funds separately, okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, did I read the appropriation order correctly into the record? If not, if you could reintroduce it.
Yes, Mr. President, that the, excuse me, that the annual budget for the fiscal year 2020 from various funds is 296,691,415, of which the amount of 289,596,091 be raised through taxation for appropriation.
There's a motion to adopt, made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby, hearing any further discussion before this council, hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the budget appropriation order, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and the inter-municipal agreement between the city of Fall River and the redevelopment authority.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt, made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on June 12th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying communication be approved with Counselor Joseph Kamara absent and not voting. This is also a street opening request, and this, the location is 724 Plymouth Avenue.
Move adoption of the committee's report?
Motion to approve the committee's report, has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on June 12th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying order be adopted with Counselor Joseph Kamara absent and not voting. This is a new pole location at President Avenue.
Move adoption of the committee's report?
Motion to adopt the committee's report, has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number nine is in a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading enrollment?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a, um, proposed ordinance for passage through second reading enrollment, amending the sewer rates.
Motion to adopt through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor?
Second.
Vice President LeBeau, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
On passage through second reading and enrollment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Item number eleven is proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment, these are the water rate increases.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Vice President LeBeau, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call, my apologies, roll call, Madam Clerk.
On, on passage through second reading and enrollment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibee LeBeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
We have the, uh, Water Department modifications to the personnel ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the personnel ordinance relating to G I S specialists for second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item fourteen is the salary schedule adjustments, uh, for passage through second reading and enrollment, these are just-
Motion to pass second reading enrollment?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item fifteen is the salary schedule adjustments, uh, these, this will adjust the rate of increase for employees, and this is for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment, has been made by Counselor
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And lastly, we have the proposed ordinance submitted by the Special City Charter Committee for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Vice President LeBeau. Discussion. Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just wanted to question, having served as a member of this committee, there were quite a few different recommendations that were made by the committee. It was submitted by the Chairman Michael Mioza. So, is the recommendation from the Ordinance Committee and the second reading and enrollment accepting all of the recommendations that were submitted by the Charter Commission? And have each of those, could someone clarify that for me?
Madam Clerk?
Counsel, the proposed ordinance only, will only amend those sections that the Charter Committee requested. Those other sections that were questionable, that needed further review, that list has been referred to the Corporation Council, and we have not received anything back as of yet.
So then, what specifically is being adopted by us tonight? What, I have the item number sixteen in front of me. Could you just specify which of the items are being now changed?
This was basically references to the charter that were within city ordinances that simply the section numbers were, have been amended by the new charter, and so those sections' numbers basically have been amended.
So is this the ordinance spreadsheet?
It's based on the spreadsheet. It's those items that were definitive that we could in fact correct by virtue of this ordinance, and those that needed further review have been separated from this ordinance.
Point of information?
Counselor on seat one, your point of information.
Second reading and enrollment. Can we get the vote of the first vote, first reading?
First reading was unanimous.
Okay, as long as it's understood that, does this eliminate the Police Board?
No, no, Counsel. That was one of the questions that was, one of the items that was separated and referred to the Corporation Council.
Okay, all right. I'm willing to let it go and support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, I yield.
Thank you very much. Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And before you for second reading and enrollment as amended is the salary adjustment for the EMA Director.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counsel Vice President LeBeau, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Counselor on seat one opposed? The ayes have it.
For passage through second reading and enrollment as amended, the salary schedule for the City Council Principal Clerk?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item nineteen is the zoning ordinance that refers to wind energy facilities for second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended?
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment as amended has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas anyone under eighteen years of age can buy a knife that is less than three inches at any retail location throughout Fall River, and whereas residents in Fall River want their community and schools to be safe, and whereas students have brought knives into our schools, and whereas students were able to purchase these knives at many local stores, now therefore be it resolved that Corporation Council and the Chief of Police be invited to a future meeting of the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation to discuss a proposed ordinance prohibiting anyone under eighteen years of age from purchasing any size or type of knife at any store and follow.
Motion to adopt?
Motion, motion to refer to?
I think, according to Jerry, adopting a resolution.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor?
Me.
Kadeem, seconded by?
Second.
Counsel Vice President LeBeau. Discussion.
Aye.
The sponsor of the resolution, Counselor on seat five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
I just wanted to remind the Counselors that this is the ordinance that the eighth grade class from Morton is working on with the Corporation Council and the Police Chief and myself through Generation Citizen.
Thank you. Anything further? You yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Nothing further? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas residents of Old Second Street have raised safety concerns regarding the area behind the Academy Building, and whereas the area behind the building is poorly lit, and whereas many of the residents have reported fighting and suspicious activity taking place in this area, and whereas this type of activity and poor lighting have made many of the residents fearful of accessing the back of the building, impacting their quality of life, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council Committee on Public Safety convene with the Police Chief, City Planner, Management of the Academy Building, and with representatives of the City Administration to address these concerns.
Motion to adopt resolution?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. I've mentioned this previously, Old Second Street, also known as Loose Seven Promenade, on the west side of the Academy Building, is becoming a problematic situation. And I would like to, having had some conversation with the Director of Traffic, particularly Ms. Ferrera's mentioning of lighting that she might be installing or scheduled to install possible cameras being installed on the parking garage, that she should be added to this meeting. And also, considering that this is a project of the Redevelopment Authority, as I understand it, although the planner has played a significant role in the process, I think it would be appropriate also to have the, and I'm not sure what her title is, Director of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, also be included in the be it resolved. So, I would ask that the resolution be amended to include invites to the Director of Traffic and the Director of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority.
Okay, I don't believe that.
This amended?
I'll acknowledge the amendment. I just want you to know that the Redevelopment Authority doesn't own that anymore. So, but we can invite them as Chair, we can invite whoever you want, but.
I think, I think they funded that project, though, did they not?
I believe they did. Yeah, I believe they did. So if you want to invite them, the Chair can, but the motion to amend has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion on the amendment. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Move to adopt the resolution as amended?
Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can the Police Chiefs report on licenses?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Long.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses for Michael Panaccio at 535 Bay Street, Brian Mora at 480 South Main Street, and John Glass at 84 14th Street.
Move adoption of the renewals?
Motion to adopt the renewals has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the renewal of auto body shop licenses on behalf of Michael Panaccio at 535 Bay Street, Brian Mora at 480 South Main Street, and Louis Souza and Rose Reposo at 2238 Main Street.
Move adoption of the license renewals?
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Do you have a number of claims?
With Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council is made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor?
Second.
Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a drain layer license for T&amp;K Asphalt Services?
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a request from Recover Fall River to place banners on the railings at Government Center for, to promote Overdose Awareness Day?
To adopt?
Motion to adopt and approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And we have applications for structures over public way on behalf of Recover Fall River, for banners over North Main Street, South Main Street, near the courthouse, Pleasant Street, and Bedford Street.
Motion to adopt is made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Counselor on seat five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
I just have a question to the clerk in general on the banners that go over public ways. Is there a timeframe that they go up before the event and when they need to be taken down after the event? I noticed that?
I'm sorry.
There was an event at the beginning of June, and just a few days ago, their banner was still up. And this, Overdose Awareness Day is at the end of August, so would these go up a certain amount of time before, in case there's any events that are gonna be requesting this in between?
The applications do request the dates of when the banners will be up. So they are, it is listed that it will be August 1st to September 1st. The DCM, in coordination with facilities maintenance, have been assisting with putting the banners up and taking them down. I think they fell a bit behind with a couple of them. They were contacted yesterday for one on South Main Street and one on Bedford, and they have advised that they will be down by the end of the week.
Okay, but there's nothing that we have for how long they can be up before and after an event? It's just whatever the?
Whatever's on the permit.
On the permit. Okay, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
I thank my colleague on seat five for raising the issue. I in fact had contacted the office concerning the banners currently on South Main Street and on Bedford Street, which by the way are really quality banners. The banner for Day of Portugal and the banner for the Maharajan Feast of, of the Saint Anthony of the Desert Church are beautifully created banners. So, sometimes banners are put up and they get twisted, but both of these banners were obviously put up by people that knew what they were doing. However, I do think that we should, and I think we've discussed this in the past, there should be a policy established, and I don't think it has to be by ordinance. I think it can be by city clerk, that a particular timeframe be given for the removal of the banners. I'm not too concerned about how long the banners are up before the event. It might be a problem if there were five or six different banners all wanting to be up at the same time. That might be a bit of a clutter and maybe even a safety issue. But within ten days after the event, or within a week after the event, those banners should come down, so. But I won't look to it as an ordinance. I just think maybe a policy of the city clerk. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Motion, Counselor on seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Madam Clerk, the banners are returned to the parties that provided them to the city, right? They're not gonna throw them away.
Oh, no.
Just want to make sure.
They will be returned to the, to those parties.
Thank you so much.
Anything further? Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to take 29, 32 together?
Motion to take items 29 through 32 together has been made by Counselor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to adopt and place on file?
Motion to approve items 29, 30, 31, and 32 has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 33 is a notice of casualty and loss at 34 Division Street.
Move to accept, place on file?
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have one additional recommendation received by the Traffic Commission to amend the ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate?
So be it.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next item is the communication that was voted on at Tuesday's meeting at the request of the council to ask the mayor to rescind the cost of living freeze for elected officials, and additional information on how that freeze was established.
Is there a motion?
I move to refer to the Ordinance Committee.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by? Counselor Long. Discussion. Counselor on seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Yes, having been the counsel who promoted this since, and I appreciate the support that it received, we did, and I do want to give credit to City Clerk Bouchard, who did some research on this. And at the time, it was thought that this was something that was done by an order that could be rescinded, in which case we were asking the mayor to submit a, an order to rescind. However, through the research that Ms. Bouchard pursued, we find that it was actually established by ordinance, so therefore it would be required that it be changed by ordinance. I thought that maybe it could be all done at this meeting here tonight, but it seems to be the consensus that an ordinance change needs to go to Ordinance Committee and then come back to the council for a vote. So, I'm okay with that. I do want to emphasize that I think it's important, and I think it actually is justifiable to have it as an emergency preamble if we wanted to pursue this within the next few days. I think it's somewhat disturbing to me to, at this late date, we have not enough council candidates, not enough school committee candidates, and not enough mayor candidates to constitute a preliminary election. So, the number of people that are interested in running for public office is certainly much less than it's ever been. And the fact that we, who are elected officials, are the only public employees, if you will, that have had a salary freeze for about eight years now, and also have had benefits reduced because now no longer are elected officials able to get the benefits. So we've actually taken a significantly, significant cut. I don't see this as a benefit personally, because I expect to be looking through a rearview mirror at my time in public service in the very near future, and I, and I'm really happy that I've had as long a period of time as I have had to serve the public. But I do think for the sake of good government, that we should be respectful of people that run for office, and that should be translated by paying our elected officials appropriately. Fall River is at the low end of payment for school committee members, for city councilors, and for mayors. I think any work that is done as an elected official is noble work, and it should be, it should be so recognized. And I think that what we've done over the last eight years now is not really appropriate to raising up the dignity and the importance of elected, being an elected office holder. I don't have to go into the details of the state legislature and the raises that they've had constantly over the years, or the federal government, but it's local elected officials that really do the yeoman's work and are in constant contact with our constituents. Believe, I know that you all know, as I know, that most people in Fall River know their councilors, they know their mayor, they know their school committee members, and they approach us often with their concerns and problems. So, if the Ordinance Committee is so inclined, and if the council president is so inclined, I feel like I've done my duty. Now, it would be necessary, if we wanted to implement this for fiscal year 20, it would mean that the Ordinance Committee would have to meet, and probably on the 29th of June, because one of the councilors we know is not going to be here his way until then. And there may be more. I don't know what everyone's plans are for the next week. But if it were all done on the 29th by a special meeting of the Ordinance Committee and a special meeting of the council, it could be adopted for July 1st, but that's beyond my scope. I'd done what I feel I should do. Now, let others, if they agree, move this forward. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor on seat five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, because I think I saw a headline, council giving themselves a raise.
Yeah.
This is just to rescind the cost of living freeze for council, school committee, and the mayor's office. This is not giving anybody a raise. It would just rescind the freeze, and it wouldn't happen now. It doesn't happen until the next group of people start their term for office in January.
Yes, but just so everybody's clear, what will need to happen in order for this to happen in this fiscal year would be the Ordinance Committee would need to call a meeting next week. I would have to then call a special city council meeting, and we would need to pass it through an emergency preamble.
Does it constitute an emergency?
I'm not doing that.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm fine with that.
Well, it's referred to ordinance. You can have the discussion. I'm telling you, I'm not calling a special meeting for it. You yield, Counselor?
I yield. So if anyone was to bring this up again, it has to be in the first eighteen months of the next group of elected?
Right, that's how I understand it.
Okay, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor in Seat Four, Counselor Kilby?
Thank you. Based on the change and how this is going to be, has to be initiated, I'd like a roll call on this, please.
On the referral to the ordinance committee? Sure, I'll note that. Counselor in Seat Six, Counselor Long?
Yeah, I think this deserves discussion, but I'm with you. You know, I'm not ready to have rushed this through on a quick vote, and, you know, it's worthy of the discussion. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think it constitutes an emergency, and I won't support that either. So, we can have this as a discussion for some future ordinance committee, but I don't think we're in the, I'm not in the mood to rush this through for a, to consummate this before July one. I'm just not in the mood to do it, but I seconded in saying that it might deserve some discussion in ordinance, but as far as getting this through this year, I don't believe it's going to happen, and I don't think I'm going to call a special meeting just to discuss this. So, that's how I feel about it. So, I'll go with the roll call. So, I yield.
Sure. Counselor in Seat Five, you point of information?
So, this is just sending it to ordinance, not with all of the emergency?
Right, right. It's just, the communication has been sent to the ordinance committee. There's no ordinance attached to this referral to the ordinance committee, so the ordinance committee would then need to prepare an ordinance to refer to full council.
So, it can send an ordinance for however long it needs to?
Sure.
Got it. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat Two, Counselor Kamara.
Well, I didn't vote for it the first time. I'm not going to vote for it now, and I'm not going to vote for it later. As you said, it's a moot point to send it to the ordinance committee, even if it just sits there. It's not going to, it's not going to get passed this year at all. You're not going to have a special meeting. I commend you with that, and we have a discussion about that. I wouldn't have a special meeting either. So, with that, I make a motion to give the item leave to withdraw.
Motion to give the item leave to withdraw has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Roll call on the leave to withdraw.
Granting leave to withdraw, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lala Vilbeau?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Poveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
So, we have a light order for 110 Stevens Street?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the light order has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
Drain layer license on behalf of Opozo Company Landscape and Construction?
Motion to?
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor. Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to take thirty-two A through E together, please.
Thirty-two A through thirty-two E together has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion to adopt and place on file, thirty-two A through thirty-two E.
Motion to approve and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby to take items thirty-two A through E. Has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item thirty-four is an open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins regarding the June eighteenth Finance Committee meeting.
So, we have an option here that we can either refer this to the Corporation Council or refer this to the city clerk to reply to the complaint. This was an open meeting law complaint filed with respect to the June eighteenth meeting that we have the school committee and city council here. I asked one of them to leave, but they still filed the complaint, but it's here. We have to act on it.
Motion to refer to the city clerk?
Motion to refer to the city clerk to reply to the complaint has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Counselor in Seat Five, Counsel Vice President LaBeau.
Yeah, rather than sending it to Corporation Council, who is usually inundated with these, if the clerk could let Mr. Higgins know, I don't know if he stopped watching, but the meeting hadn't even gone one minute, and the council president asked one of the school committee members to leave the table, which they did. There was nothing that had happened, so I'd be fine with that. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? See somebody else here in the room? No. Motion requests a city clerk reply to the complaint has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Brief recess? Brief recess. City council meeting will now be called back to order. We have eleven to pass through. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, for passage through final ordination, we have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Move to final reading and ordination?
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the sewer rate increases.
Motion to pass through?
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Roll call.
I don't mind just being recorded as no.
Fair enough.
As long as I'm recorded as no.
Motion has been?
Which one was this?
Sewer, excuse me, sewer rate increases.
Do you want a roll call? No, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor in Seat Three opposed. The ayes have it.
We have the water rate increases for final ordination.
To adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Long, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor in Seat Three opposed. The ayes have it.
Have the water department modifications for, excuse me, for ordination.
Motion to adopt all readings has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The position of GIS specialist for ordination.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by? Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the salary schedule adjustments with the list of positions for ordination.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Salary schedule adjustments, including rate of increase for final ordination.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by? Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Proposed ordinance prepared by the Special City Charter Committee for final ordination.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have passage through final ordination as amended, the personnel salary for the EMA director.
Motion.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Counselor in Seat One opposed. The ayes have it.
For passage through final ordination as amended, the salary of the city council principal clerk.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by?
Sorry?
Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And finally, for passage through final ordination as amended, the wind energy facilities within the zoning ordinances.
Move.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Long, seconded by? Counselor Pelletier, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
That's all we have, Mr. President.
I just wanted to take a moment to let the council know how much, from my perspective, I appreciate how great the last three nights have been in terms of the meetings. They were ran well. You guys all participated very well in a respectful manner. We had all the department heads come down. We got them out of here quick. The questions were good, so I want to commend every single one of you for working collectively to accomplish this municipal budget for 2020.
Good job, Mr. Justice.
Thanks, guys. Motion has been made to adjourn by Counselor Long, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good night. Thanks, guys.